For November the 6th, if you please stand and we're going to have the invocation by someone is going to be introduced by Mr. Rolls. And then if you would, remain standing for the pledge led by the King George Middle School. And then after that, a moment of silence.
Welcome Pastor Dennis Newton from Southern Baptist Church, a King George native, to lead the invocation today. Thank you, sir.
Pray with me if you would, please. Our Father and our God, we come before you tonight as always with praise and glory and honor because Father, you are our God. You're our strength and our shield. You are our protection. You are our provider. You're the one, Father God, that we know that has created the universe. And Father God, we are the crowning creation of that universe, but we can also be your children and walk with you on a daily basis. Father God, we come tonight, Father, before your throne of grace, to ask you to anoint and bless our school board members, as well as all of our county representatives and all these families that are here tonight. But Father God, there's a great task before us, and that is to raise the next generations of children up to adults, where they will be godly people, but they will also be people who are American, but they'll also be people that will love and care about other nations of the world as well. So Father God, tonight we call upon you for our job is not easy. Our burden is not light. And so we lean on you and we draw upon you for strength and health and help during these times as we endeavor to raise all of the children of our community and county. But as we reach out to it all the world, that children may know what life holds with difficulties and joys and loves and dislikes, but be able to endure that with your strength and with your help. And Father, when we come before you, it's always in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
We have the King George Leadership Class from the middle school leading us in pledge. If you'd come to the podium. I want them to move home. The other side of the podium, sorry. All right, you can now face the flag. It's right here. All right. Now a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, leadership class, tell us a little bit about what you guys do. Yeah, why don't you go to the microphone? There you go.
Yeah, you're good. We're currently having a food drive. And we're having three things, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And different things. Donate cans of food. They each have a different.
Yeah, yeah, why don't you give us your name, please?
My name is Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Name first.
Erin Smith. One thing we're doing in leadership right now is we have planned three spirit weeks so far this year with different themes pertaining to like different ways students can dress up to show their school spirit.
My name is Peyton Carey, and we spread awareness about breast cancer, Red Ribbon Week, and we are currently promoting pancreatic cancer awareness in memory of Mr. Tanner, who was a physics teacher at King George High School who passed away in 2017.
My name's Georgia Russell, and we helped make decorations for the sixth grade 90s dance.
My name's Kayla Posey, and we do the announcements. So things like color of the day, fun facts, and obviously the president of the agency.
All right, good. You might have, you might have a couple of questions from the board here. Anybody? No questions? Well, I'll ask a question, okay? Not to put anybody on the spot, but during this whole year, what has been the most exciting thing that you guys have either led or been involved with?
So we get to do something called Lunch Palace, which I personally have enjoyed very much. So some students who are not in classrooms regularly, leadership students who will go and get, go to, go and get to eat lunch with, which has really been a pleasure to do, and I look forward to it almost every day.
Good, very good. Anything else?
We are currently having, we're actually about to have a pep rally on Thursday and for eighth and ninth grade and seventh grade students, and we get to go and like play games and promote school spirit.
And anything else? What are you guys looking forward to when you get to high school? Anybody?
In high school, I'm looking forward to being able to drive. A big school, there's like two stories.
Yeah.
I think for high school, I'm looking forward to meeting the other students and teachers and staff in there and making more connections and learning more about the people around me.
I think that I'm most excited for the drama department, just because I really like theater.
Awesome, good.
I'm looking forward for a new scenery. I've been in the middle school for three years and it's kind of getting boring for a little bit.
All right, let's all give them a hand. Thank you. All right, public comments, do we have some? Do we have any online too? No, just this, okay. All right, just if you'd bear with me, please, if you wish to, if you wish to make a public comment, please, we already done that. If anybody else wishes, even while these are going on, if you still want to make a public comment, just see Ms. Rinko over here and we'll still add you. Please, when you're recognized by me, if you had speak clearly into the microphone and also state your name and relation to the school and what district you're, what district you're from. And please limit your time to just three minutes. And the first one, we'd have Ms. Dee Strauss.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here tonight, and my name is Dee Strauss. I'm a teacher and DECA advisor here at King George High School, and I am in the James Madison District. This is National DECA Month. November is National DECA Month every year and has been since I have been a DECA advisor. This is the 23rd year that I've been a DECA advisor, 24th year teaching all at King George High School. That first year in 2001, we had 16 students. And those 16 students did all kinds of activities that year. They set the bar high, and the chapters ever since have continued on to strive to do just as much, if not more. This year, we're looking at almost 200 members, so it's very exciting. We hover around 175 to 190, but I'd like to see 200. On Wednesday, we will hold our district leadership conference in Fredericksburg. There are 53 student competitors from King George High School. There is a total field of over 300 competitors. This is the largest district event that I have seen at District 19 ever. And as the district advisor, it is an enormous job, but we're going to have a great day on Wednesday. My co-advisor, AJ Addison, and I want to thank you all for your support of King George DECA. I love this organization. I love the fact that I get to work with these incredible children. And they aren't with me for just three or four years. They come back and they chaperone and they do videos to tell the kids about what they learned. And it's very gratifying to be part of this, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, let's give her a hand. Thank you. We've got three others, but before they come up, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Strauss. You have really honored us by all the work that you do for DECA. God bless you. Now we have Summer, I don't know if I can read this last name. Prouse, Summer Prouse. And obviously, as if you're a student, you only get, need to mention your name and that you're a student. You don't have to say what district you're from.
Hi, my name is Summer Prouse, and I'm the Vice President of Leadership for DECA at King George High School. And I'm going to be talking a little bit about DECA. So DECA is an incredible organization. That means a lot to our students, community, and personally to me. It provides valuable opportunities for students to develop essential business and leadership skills. Through DECA, students gain real world, real world experience, network with professionals, and compete in various business events. DECA also fosters a sense of community by organizing fundraisers, community service projects, and networking events. Personally, DECA has helped me grow as a leader, build confidence, and develop listening, and develop lifelong skills that will benefit me in my future career. It is an amazing organization that truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prouse. All right, now Ms. Ashley Hayden. Okay. All right, Ms. Virginia Yergi.
Hi, my name is Virginia Yergi, and I am the Vice President of Marketing in our DECA chapter. What DECA means to me is growing up, usually kids have a sport that they like fall in love with and grow off of. I never had that growing up. I hopped from sport to sport to sport to sport. So when I got to high school and realized what DECA was, I fell in love with it. I went to every competition, and I always came home with like a little medal or like a little trophy. And when you walk into my room, you see them all on the wall. It's like my pride and joy. I love it. And what I've learned from DECA is that there's so many great opportunities to go with it. I've learned how to become a better leader, a better talker in public. I have met, networked with so many colleges, and I've reached out to them about what I want to do when I go to college. And what I realized is I want to study marketing when I go to college. Like it's helped me find who I am as a person, and it helps me feel successful in some little way. I love the leadership. I love talking to people. Like my mom, my mom right there always makes fun of me because my mouth never stops running. It's like a volcano. I never stop talking. And it's the biggest thing I get picked on from my teachers because my mouth is never ending. I love networking with people. I love the communication. And this year I am running to be like a president or region president for our state of Virginia. So I'm very happy DECA has made me found what I love to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, that excitement is contagious. All right. Do I have anybody else? Okay, since there's nobody online, let's go ahead to the next item, and that is any changes to the agenda. Anybody, board members? Mr. Rolls? Or did you have one too? Mr. Rolls?
So I have some comments. I'd like to have some discussion about the legislative positions, just our process and how we want to do that going forward. So either add that as a discussion item or just tack that on to the end of the action item that we have on the agenda. Can we do either one?
Yeah, it's in the discussion item, so after we vote on things or you want?
Well, that's the other thing, it needs to move to action items because Mrs. Gonzalez pointed out last time, this is our last opportunity to vote on it, so we need to act on it today.
Legislative positions, yeah. I was going to say, all right. So, but we'll have yours as a discussion item, and is that all right?
Let's keep them separate.
Yeah, I'd like to keep them separate if it's okay. We'll have the actual legislative. Sorry, as an action item, and you can have a discussion item for yours.
I would just offer, in the past, we haven't necessarily voted on them as long as we gain consensus, right?
What consensus, yes, you're fine. But we'll have it, it's fine, but I'd like to keep it separate, Mr. Rolls, if that's all right. Okay. It is a consensus. All right, any other changes? If not, we have the presentations. First one is a donation of the instruments, and I believe it's Mrs. Hope. Or maybe Mr. Boyd, I don't know which, or both.
Dr. Boyd, it's both of us, actually.
All right.
And we'd like to ask Ms. Ashton to come forward. You could introduce her.
Yes, I certainly can. So we have Ms. Ashton from King George Elementary School. She's the music teacher, very successful music teacher at King George Elementary School. And she is here tonight receiving a donation from Ms. Hope. Would you like to talk a little bit about the donation?
I would indeed. It has become my mission in life to find instruments that need to be played. And you'd be surprised at the many places they are found, and I'll talk about that later. But Ms. Ashton has greatly blessed us by being here tonight to receive these items because I want people to see and hear about what they're actually going to do with these. So after we do that, maybe you could do a few moments of the excitement of what students can do with those. Okay, so what we have over here, I guess I can't take a mic with me, can I?
Oh, he has one for you. Ms. Hope, he has a mic for you, right here.
Service. I'll break out in song and dance. I was so fortunate to be at a music festival called the Black Mountain Music Festival in North Carolina, which I've attended for many, many years because I've tried to play at the Mountain Dulcimer for many, many years. And I'm not accomplished, but it is an exciting event. And every year, they welcome new instructors. And one of the instructors there was this wonderful young man called Little Rev. And let me grab. Our favorite bumper sticker has now become Little Rev. And he taught ukulele and various other items. He plays a variety of things. He's a gig musician. He goes all over the country. But you need to Google Little Rev. He's a young man who is from Wisconsin, like our Mr. Rolls, and is of immigrant heritage. He wears an Irish cap, and he's a fairly short man and built like a weightlifter. And he wears an Irish outfit with vest and cap. And among the songs he taught us were Yiddish songs because he's also Jewish. And so he has this heritage of music that is incredible. And so he started out in his professional life as a music teacher at an elementary school, teaching ukulele. And so then he moved on to performance and gig performances and moving around the world. So if you get a chance, look him up. He's fun. So I also brought one of his CDs to give to Ms. Ashton. It's called Unheard, they're songs from the street that you'll, you perhaps will hear buskers playing in the streets. Again, they're just, they're fun songs. They're fun instruments to play. We have two types of ukuleles here that we were able to, I was able to purchase. And one is the concert ukulele. And we have two of those, and these were ukuleles that he has used in his concerts, have his students. And the other form is a soprano ukulele. I had no idea before starting this venture that there are all kinds of ukuleles. And this is a soprano ukulele. We have two of those, and these three are made by Kala, which is, which is a good brand of ukulele. And this is sort of an extra one, as is this one that I picked up at Facebook Marketplace, I think. And what I have learned, what I'll say later, is that, you know Craigslist and eBay and all those places we hang out, although, you know, although we don't really tell people we hang out on Facebook Marketplace and eBay. These, these were expensive, except for that one, instruments that he used in his teaching that as we talked through the week, I told him that I was not going to be his successful student, but that we had students back in King George County that could be his successful student someday. So we worked out a deal, you know, my good old southern negotiation with his Yiddish-Irish negotiation. So we came up with a, with a good deal. And so tonight I'm presenting on behalf of Little Rev, these five dulc, five, I wish, five ukuleles to Ms. Ashton, and a CD, and a beginner's ukulele book. There are, there is even a ukulele book for dummies. There are all kinds of, and you can start no matter what age you are. So as people move into retirement, you know, you can start up an instrument. Now, I would personally suggest you start on a Mountain Dulcimer, but that's just my prejudice. At any rate, these are going home with Ms. Ashton, and they're in fairly good shape. And I know, so I'd like for you to give us an idea of what you're going to do with them.
Well, immediately, fifth grade usually starts ukuleles. We started in about January. They learn pianos and ukuleles, but I also started with the younger kids. And the funniest thing is when you give a ukulele to a kindergartner, they immediately go, oh, my gosh, the guitar! And it's so cute. So I'm really excited to get these in my classroom and get the kids' hands on them. They're going to be so excited. So I appreciate the donation, and we're just really excited.
So much with you.
Another item that, you know, both at Black Mountain and in various parts of the Appalachians, you're going to run into folks who do percussion of various sorts. And so you run into all kinds of little instruments that people play spoons or a suitcase rigged up with the hammer, like a drum. And this happens to be a frog. There are many sorts of these, and I'm not very good at it, but if you try. Are you better at it?
You might go lightly.
You can make it a deep frog, which is what I was trying to do, but not successfully. We're going to send this along with you also as you develop your percussion department. We might, we might have to have some spoons and all that kind of stuff coming along. So, thank you.
And we need a, we need a picture. Why don't you stand with Ms. Hope right there? Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Thank you again. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the King George, the King George Education Foundation Fund, of course, sorry. And that's going to be discussed by?
Evening. My name is Heather Jennings. I am the President of the King George Education Foundation. With me, I have a couple of our board members this evening. Chris Buck, our Treasurer and Director of Foxmart, as well as Katie Poole, our Secretary and Director of the Innovation Grant Program. Dave Zook, our Director of the STEM Program could not be with us this evening. I do want to start by thanking the school board for allowing the foundation to present our innovation grant winners this evening. For those of you who may not know, the innovation grants are an annual award that the foundation offers to enhance the quality of education in our schools through innovation and creativity. We seek proposals that present promising ideas for achieving the district's curricular goals, enhancing students' personal development, and/or encouraging links with the community. We appreciate everyone who submitted applications, but after careful consideration, we have selected seven submissions for our 2023 winners. I am going to go through the list of the winners, and they do have varying amounts, and that's just based on the applicant's request. I would ask that any of the winners who are here in attendance, please stay for a photo at the end. So our first recipient is Kelly Lewis, and her project is Interactive Phonics to benefit her first grade class at King George Elementary. The focus of Ms. Lewis's project is to purchase necessary tools and supplies to enhance her science of reading literary centers in her classroom. These centers are interactive, hands-on learning centers used to help readers of all levels improve their reading skills. A few of the items that will be purchased with the grant are guided reading strips, an auditory feedback phone, watercolors, acrylic paint used for segmenting sounds, and alphabet tiles. The grant award amount for this one is $441. Our next winner is Dee Strauss, a King George High, at King George High School, who proposes using her grant support for the existing Clover Point of Sale project benefiting King George High schoolers. The focus of her proposal is to help support the Foxstocks School Store as it becomes more user-friendly and technologically savvy for students, staffers, and customers alike. The new Clover system, which has already been purchased with other funding, makes it possible to staff to keep better inventory, allowing for more real-time point-of-sale learning opportunities, as well as offering credit card and debit card purchasing power to customers, which of course gives more options for selling items. This grant will help pay for monthly expenses to help keep Clover running smoothly. The grant total on this one is $500. Our next winner is Matthew Wold, also at King George High School, with his science-based project, Physics and Etch-A-Sketch. Mr. Wold will be enhancing his learning experience for his physics students at the high school by using the classic Etch-A-Sketch to help teach an existing lesson, but in an innovative way. Specifically, students will focus on the understanding of how vertical and horizontal motion can occur at the same time while simultaneously being separated mathematically. Mr. Wold realized that students using this tool could get a hands-on, practical lesson to learn, ultimately reinforcing the concept. We are thrilled to help bring this to Mr. Wold's classroom. The grant award for this one is $430. Our next winner is a team, Dawn Hamilton, Julie Sodergrin, and Gillian Misselli, with their project, Poppin' with Attendance, to benefit all students at Sealston Elementary. Using this grant money, the entire school body will be in store for a treat as the counselors plan to buy a popcorn machine and all the supplies to go with it as part of an incentive program to encourage attendance at Sealston. Positive reinforcement is the key to this program where students will have the opportunity to attend popcorn parties if they themselves, their class, or their grade levels obtain strong attendance numbers. The grant award for this one is $438. Our next winner is Yvonne Richard of King George Elementary, with her project, Up Up and Away, benefiting all STEM students at King George Elementary. Mrs. Richard's program will benefit her STEM students by sharing lessons she learned while attending a training session from a Department of Defense STEM workshop hosted by Dr. Yemethi. The monies from this grant will be used to purchase materials needed to make hot air balloons, tetrahedral kites, and robotic arms similar to ones found on the space station. This project will offer independent and small group learning opportunities, allowing students to literally see their work take flight. The grant amount for this one is $500. Our next winner is another team, Julie Wagner, Tammy Brinkman, and Breon Hickson are planning a project to unlock the reading code with secret stories, which will benefit the kindergarten classes at Potomac Elementary. Kindergarteners will have a blast learning why letters make the sounds that they do with this innovative project. The kindergarten team will use secret stories, a brain-based approach to traditional phonics, to engage students to help them read and write. Funds from this grant will be used to purchase guides and accompanying posters, which will help young readers learn why letters make the sounds that they do when they get together in words. The grant total for this one is $369. Last but not least, Ms. Terry Rinko, with her project, Work-Based Learning Experience Space Items, in support of King George High School. The grant funds for this will be used to buy posters and new signs. and new signage for the Work-Based Experience Center at the high school. This is a brand-new initiative that all Virginia schools will be required to have for graduation and accreditation going forward. King George High School was recognized in the paper recently for achieving semifinalist status in the Virginia Department of Education's Dream Work-Based Learning Ecosystem Contest. This space, which is already open, is a place where students will go for school-coordinated workplace experiences. The funding will elevate the students' experience and welcome community members to the high school as they begin wonderful partnerships, which undoubtedly enrich our school, our high schoolers' learning opportunities. The grant awarded for this one is $450. And that concludes our presentation. Again, I thank you all for your time. I congratulate all of our innovation grant winners this year and we're looking forward to hearing about their projects at the end of the school year.
Thank you. Wait, before you leave, just, I'm wondering what the total is. Do you have the total of all the grants together?
I happen to know, it was, I think it's around 3,000 usually. Little bit over 3,000 for the total.
Well, thank you so much, all the support things. Wow, thank you. You really help the schools.
Very exciting. So do we have any winners here that we can get okay?
Yes. Kinda spread out in front of the semicircle here. Mr. Wold, why don't you come on this end down here? Yeah, why don't you come in that picture too? Yes. Thank you. All right, next we have the Health and Safety Advisory Committee update.
Ready? Good evening, school board members. Dr. Boyd, I appreciate you guys inviting us tonight to share some of our Health and Safety Committee work and updates for the current school year. I have with me Dr. Troy Wright, our deputy superintendent, and Casey Morrison, who is our preschool nurse and lead clinical coordinator for the division. So we all share a piece of this tonight. So I'll turn it over to them in a minute. Next slide, John. So first, just an overview of the Health and Safety Committee. As you well know, it is a required advisory committee of the school board. We have broken it up into three categories tonight to talk to you about, the first being mental health, which I'll address. Casey then is going to speak on physical health and then Dr. Wright will provide some information on student and staff safety. You can go on to the next slide. So first, we'll start with some of the things that we already have in place in our division. These are staff and programs, our staff ratios really, that run most of the programs under Safe and Healthy Students. First, we have our school counselors and I do want to thank the board first in their support historically. I've been in this position eight, eight years? Eight years. And when I began, we had ten school counselors across the division. We now have fourteen funded positions. So that has greatly improved our ratio. However, and we do meet the SOQs at 1 to 325, which I have indicated up there. But I do want to mention that four of those fourteen positions are unfilled by licensed counselors at this time in our division, which speaks to the greater need of the teacher shortage and the crisis that we're having right now in, you know, across the nation, not just King George or Virginia. But we do have some recommendations in regards to improving those ratios and helping support our staff that we currently have in place, not only in hiring new staff, but in retaining those that we already have. It's in regards to our counselors. We have five counselors at the high school, one of which is a twelve-month director and the remainder are eleven-month counselors. At the middle school, we have three, one of which is a twelve-month director. And at the elementary school, we have six counseling positions, two at each elementary school. However, of those six, only one of them is an experienced counselor at this time. That's Ms. Sarah Ritchie at King George Elementary School, who I do want to make note, she was named the Virginia School Counselor, Elementary School Counselor of the Year for this current school year. So congratulations to her. But at the other, our other five positions, at Potomac, we have one brand-new counselor. And at Sealston, we also have a brand-new counselor. And the other positions are filled by currently substitute support staff members, which we certainly appreciate all of the work that they provide and assistance they provide in those departments. But we really need to get those positions filled by licensed school counselors. Particularly at the elementary school level, one of our recommendations is to establish, create a position for a lead elementary school counselor who would act similarly to the middle school director and high school directors that we currently have in place. Sarah is currently filling that role under her normal ten-month contract by providing the mentorship and coordination of those six elementary school positions, which are all either brand-new or not filled at this time. So it's a lot of work, as you can imagine. Similarly, our school social workers, again, when I, eight years ago, we had two for the entire division, if you can believe that. And we are now at five school social workers. They are assigned to each individual school. So our ratio has improved greatly. We're at 1 to 900 at this point. But it's important to note that in that, they are assigned to each individual school. The high school social worker, as an example, her ratio is actually 1 to 1,500, because she serves the entire high school and so forth. Recommendation out of this is to establish, similar to, as I spoke to the counselors, that lead position is having a social worker as a lead social worker for the division that can help coordinate those services, as well as adding an additional six social worker position to the coming budget. Briefly, the nurses, Casey's gonna touch more on the nurses here in a minute. We also have one nurse per school in King George County, as well as two assistants that, to date, had been paid under a grant short-term that ended in July that we are now hoping will, with the governors, with the state having recently provided our calc tool and such, that that'll be something moving forward we will continue to discuss with local funding. So those are our current programs and staff ratios. So the Health and Safety Advisory Committee is a very broad committee that has a lot of different subgroups and subcommittees under it. And a lot of funding does come from grants. So we'll try to make note of those things as we go, because moving forward, it's important to understand where the funding came from up to this point and where funding may be needed moving forward, as well as the other requirements that this very broad committee does meet as far as other committees go. So the largest funding source that we have right now is our Title IV grant. It's a fairly small grant, it's about $30,000 a year. It was established in 2017, so it's fairly new. But it does provide the most substantial funding for the bulk of our programs. There are two categories under which the Title IV grant must be used. You all see this grant every summer, approve it annually. On the left, I've just bulleted out a list of some things under well-rounded students, which is one of the categories. And on the right is Safe and Healthy Students. Again, which is why this falls under our Safe and Healthy Advisory Committee. Next slide. Thank you. So I wanna touch on for a minute about Project Kind. This is a new initiative that just kicked off this year and really kinda grabs a bunch of things under its umbrella. This began, again, under a grant that, I don't think Christine's here today. No, Christine Hill wrote a couple of years ago in regards to student wellness. And although that grant funding has ended, it really did kinda kick off this larger initiative of Project Kind in doing our needs assessment at the beginning of the grant. And as you've even heard just tonight, we do amazing things here in King George County Schools. And in looking at all of these programs and projects and initiatives and things that all of the schools do, we, we really wanted to pull a lot of them together into a kinda consistent division-wide focus on kindness, really. Because they all, we found that we have so many things that do relate to that. And not only does it, you know, connect the students to the school community, but it also connects the schools to the greater community in King George. So this is just an overview of Project Kind. It really has kinda three components of it. Character education component, bullying prevention component, as well as student engagement activities, clubs and prevention activities. The leadership group from the middle school talked about a few things that they're doing that would fall under Project Kind, et cetera. There's also a website, a webpage now on the King George County Schools website that has more information about Project Kind. And we include information in the weekly, monthly newsletters, hopefully that you all are receiving, to share more information about that. So on that note, we are dressed alike on purpose at Dr. Wright's suggestion. And I love it. This, these shirts kicked off Bullying Prevention Month, which was October. Around the world, the first Monday of the month is Blue Shirt Day or the World Day of Bullying Prevention. And these are the shirts that we created this year for King George County Schools, which kinda takes the world theme and individualizes it for us. The theme was Unapologetically Kind. And their logo was that phrase repeated five times. And we tweaked the middle one and it says Unapologetically King George, KG, there, just to show that, you know, we, we are, we are proud to be from King George and in King George and working for King George County Schools. And then a list of some other things that the schools did during the month of October and then coming up in November. We did kickoff Project Kind last week. Lessons began for character education and the November theme is gratitude, which really kinda starts the holiday season and all the programs that we do to support our community, our Shop with a Cop and Shop with a Sheriff and our Angel Tree Projects, et cetera. And these are just some fun pictures of things that were going on in the schools during the month of October to celebrate these different events. There's Mix It Up at Lunch Day. Potomac had the Virginia Repertory Theater come in and perform the Velveteen Rabbit. Social workers, counselors, our school resource officers did classroom guidance lessons for our students, spirit weeks, et cetera. So that's kinda the mental health side of things for this Health and Safety Committee. I'm gonna send it over now to Casey and she's gonna talk to you a little bit more about the physical health side of the committee.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Boyd, I'm Casey Morrison, lead nurse for King George County Schools, clinical coordinator. I have talked to a lot of you, but never seen you face-to-face, so it's nice to see you. I'm gonna talk, like Mary said, about the health topics that are covered by the Health and Safety Advisory Committee. We've had the pleasure of having Mr. Bush and Ms. Hawk serve with us in my time on the advisory committee. So thank you guys for your input into some of these things we're gonna discuss tonight. As a committee, one of the things we do is review the wellness plan. That is led by Ms. Amita Davis, our supervisor of school nutrition. And an example of one of her amazing campaigns she brought to the high school was a presentation you guys have, are also heard, the Rev Your Bev campaign at the high school. Hugely successful, the kids loved it. I know three of mine are at the high school and they all brought home their reusable water bottles that I get to hand wash. And day-to-day clinic operations are my responsibility. During the school year, like Mary said, I am the preschool nurse. I also am the nurse on call for the Head Start program, as well as the school board office. So most of my work has to be done during the summer time. In the summer, I really focused hard on standardizing our practices and documentation in our clinics. It's very important that we do the same things as a division and give out the same information at each school to our families. And so that was a big focus for me this summer, to make sure we're doing it all the same and that we align with our surrounding districts known as the PD-16. So that covers Spaltavania, Caroline, you know, our surrounding areas. We wanna make sure that we're, we're keeping, keeping up and doing things basically the same way in our, in our area. And as we make changes, the Health and Safety Committee is updated, definitely take their input and try to involve that into what's going on. A little bit about our nurses. We are all members of the National Association of School Nurses and we attend the BDOE, VDH meetings to make sure that we're doing best practice when it comes to caring for our students. And our nurses work very hard every day to create those individualized plans for students that work in collaboration with their healthcare providers, their teachers, their families, to make sure that we're giving them the care that they need and that they're getting to learn the way that they need to learn. Next slide. So also part of the Health and Safety Committee is we talk about athletics. These programs started in athletics, concussions, cardiac arrest procedures, and heat and weather-related. But they now encompass all students, not just our athletes, because it's important, not just for athletes, it's important for all of our students. So our concussion protocols are reviewed annually by the committee and we will be developing a communication flow chart to make sure that any of those potential concussions are getting communicated to the nurse, to the teachers, to the counselors, and that these students are not being overlooked when maybe they need some accommodations in the classroom for a little bit. So we can't forget the return-to-learn part as we work towards the return to play. And that's gonna be a big part. We want standardized flow sheets so nothing gets missed. The Health and Safety Committee also worked together to develop heat illness response bags. These are incredible insulated cooler backpacks with supplies that would help reduce a student or staff member, anyone who's experiencing symptoms of a various level of a heat illness, to start cooling them off while we're waiting for EMS to arrive. So these bags were developed, built, and distributed with input from the committee. The schools were very excited to receive those. We, let's see, oh, and we will be working on setting thresholds. The committee realized we don't have anything specific about when students can go outside for recess, the high and low temperatures. So we need to set some thresholds for schools to follow so that we are all doing it the same way and keeping our kids safe. These three topics are covered in our Athletic Handbook, which is a subgroup of our Code of Conduct so that we make sure that our athletes are very aware of these policies. Okay, so emergency response. We have members on our committee who are also the leaders of our fire and safety teams in our county. So we were very fortunate to use some of our workforce grant funding to purchase seven AED machines to replace the machines that were outdated. So we now have the current model in seventeen locations throughout our buildings, which is incredible. Some places have none. And we have multiple in every one of our buildings in the division. Again, that was grant-funded, so as Mary said, we will kinda need to think about that moving forward in the budgets, because we'll have to replace batteries and pads periodically for these new machines. And we are ahead of the state of Virginia because we already train our staff annually on hands-only CPR and the use of an AED. That is just now becau- That has just now become a legislative topic, but we, we do it. So our staff is prepared every year to respond to any potential emergencies. And we also, as a group, collaborated with the King George Fire and Rescue. They installed Asher cabinets at each of our schools. Those are cabinets that provide supplies in case of a mass trauma. So that's right there onsite. We can start as a group while we're waiting and then they have what they need to respond. I was also able to coordinate with Chief Simmons to develop a 911 tool for our nurses to use to give information that EMS or the hospital staff may need if a student is transported. It's very clear, it's a report, they run it, they give it and everything they might need to know about that student's health and the situation that they're being transported out is, is ready to go for them. We purchased, you'll see this fun guy in a chair. We purchased these chairs for our multi-level schools. They are single operator, that's a huge benefit. So I, I got in the chair and I worked the chair. So I can tell you it works, one person, you can guide them down. And so now we have an effective way to evacuate students, staff, anyone from second level buildings. Prior to this, it was multi-person use sleeves that you had to have lots of strong people to help you carry them down. Nope, these, you strap them in the chair and wheel it. And like I said, I wheeled a firefighter down the stairs all by myself. So it, we want to thank them, they came in, they, they trained our staff, anyone who wanted to learn, especially those who work on second floor. So thankful to the committee and our members, we got them in there and they got us trained. The Code of Virginia requires that schools keep undesignated stock medications, such as epinephrine and albuterol in our clinics. We do that, we provide that. We also provide annual hands-on training for our staff on the use of the EpiPens and other emergency medications. But one of the recommendations of the Health and Safety Committee is for King George to adopt a policy regarding stocking and administration of naloxone, also known as Narcan, to combat opioid overdoses. This would align with the practices in PD-16 because Spotsylvania, Stafford and Fredericksburg City all have active naloxone policies. And it would be a medication that would be free to the clinics. And we would train our staff, our nurses and things like that. But Dr. Wright will talk to you more about that later. And Mary, did you want to add anything just on those slides really quick? Because then I'll go into our day-to-day life of a nurse. Okay. So a little glimpse into what our nurses do. We are not just Band-Aid and ice pack nurses, which I know our, our little kids really like ice packs, they heal a lot of things. As for staff, we have six registered nurses who full-time staff our clinics. Five of us are bachelors prepared and two of us are currently enrolled in master's programs. One, I was lucky to use the workforce grant funds to pay to study and pass the National Board Certification for School Nurses. So in April, I was awarded that certification. Let's see. You can see last year, we used our grant funding to hire two LPNs, who were our clinic assistants. One rotated between the three elementary schools and one rotated between the middle and the high school. That funding is ending. So we are crossing our fingers that it will go through in the local budget as requested for the 23-24. Because as you can see, last year, we saw 31,494 visits in our clinics. That does not include those children who come for daily medications or the ones who run in really quick for a Band-Aid or run into anything. And maybe the clinic is busy and the nurse couldn't chart that right that second. So we are only capturing about 80% of our visits. And as of this afternoon, we have seen 10,677 kids for the school year. And again, that doesn't include medications or anything like that. So we are busy. And our student healthcare acuity needs are high. This is just last year's data. So you can see, some of these take one-on-one. To do a catheterization of a patient or a student, I should say, sorry, can take up to 30 minutes of closing the clinic if it's just one nurse. So that's 30 minutes of not being able to see anyone else. With that extra help, you know, we have the ability to keep seeing those students. So there's, there's a lot. The recommendation on ratios is one nurse to 125 intensive need students. So for our 345 total students right there, that would include, that would need three nurses alone just to take care of those intensive needs. The, the remainder of our 4,100 students in the division could then be divided by the recommended ratio of 1 to 750, which would mean we needed 5.5 nurses. So a total of 8.5 nurses would be need to meet basic student healthcare needs. We currently have six FTEs. So we have requested the two clinic assistants to help balance out that. And it still makes us a halftime nurse short. So just want to thank our school nurses. They, they are very busy and they do an incredible job of keeping our kids healthy and safe. So I'm going to pass it back to Mary to talk about that safety part.
So again, I'm just going to start with a couple of just descriptions of some things in regards to student safety and then Dr. Wright's going to take the rest of it. So first is the SBAR. That is the new mechanism for data reporting in the state of Virginia. It started a couple of years ago. It replaced the DCV or Discipline, Crime and Violence Report. All of these reports are publicly available on the VDOE website and collects data from, from Power School that we put in at the school division level. To the SBAR is exactly what it says. The student behavior is recorded, so what the student does. And then the administrator's response is also recorded. What interventions do they put in place for that student? And all of that data is collected by the state annually. As part of that, you know, we have the Code of Conduct Work Group, which one of the school board members, we start usually in January. So at your organizational meeting, usually that's when your representative is selected, works on that Code of Conduct Work Group through the spring to review and revise the Code of Conduct, which is part of the Student and Family Handbook. Reviews the discipline data, information from the Health and Safety Advisory Committee, as well as the School Safety Audit, which Dr. Wright will speak more of here in a minute to inform us in the writing of the Code of Conduct. So the, so the SBAR being one substantial kind of data collection component. The other is the School Safety Audit. School Safety Audit is required by the Code of Virginia to provide information back to the state in regards to five different components. Five, yeah, there are five components of the School Safety Audit that schools have to report on. Next slide. So these are the five components of the School Safety Audit. The first is a school survey of climate conditions in the school. This is given annually in the spring to all staff members, K through 12, as well as students on an alternating year basis. Middle school students do it one year, high school students do it the next year. And that helps inform our division's strategic plan. Talks about student and staff perceptions of bullying and relationships, student engagement, et cetera. The second component, numbers two and three actually up there together, the School Safety Survey is kind of a data collection of things that are not captured in the SBAR. That would be threat assessments, professional development we provide for these programs, whether we have SROs in our schools, et cetera. The schools have to answer their school-level safety survey. And then the division combines all of that information and submits a summary as well. Then the fourth component is the Crisis Management Plan. It's reviewed annually by the Division Crisis Manager, or Division Safety Manager, which I believe is Dr. Wright at this time. And that is certified at the, before the school year begins every year. And then the fifth component is the School Safety Inspection Checklist. That's actually only required every three years. I think probably informally, we do it every, I'm certain informally, we do it every year. But using their checklist every three years. That's an actual walkthrough of the, all of the campuses, the facilities, the physical plant, et cetera, and reporting back on that. So I'm going to talk just one more minute about threat assessment, which is a component of the Safety Audit underneath the umbrella of crisis management. As you hopefully see, this is so broad, Health and Safety Advisory, and everything really overlaps. Our school counselors and school social workers tend to be the case managers for threat assessment, which is why I'm speaking to it, because I help oversee that process. Threat assessment teams were established several years ago, again, by the Code of Virginia, which is noted up there, really in response to school mass incidents where they learned, you know, after the fact that various members of the school community had information in isolation. The teacher might have known this or heard that. The nurse might have, you know, known something about a particular student. But until they came together, unfortunately, more often than not after a crisis had occurred, they didn't know that all of these different pieces existed. So threat assessment teams were developed in order to bring these teams together proactively prior to incidents occurring, hopefully bringing together shareholders that might have different pieces of information on a particular student that they can come up with planes of intervention for that. So every school does have a threat assessment team at the school level. And then the Health and Safety Advisory Committee has, again, a broad division-level threat assessment, division-level team to kind of oversee that process. And then this is just a kind of outline of the levels of risk that are reported back to the state as part of that School Safety Audit. Once interviews and investigations are completed by the threat assessment team, they have to determine what level of risk that threat may fall under and then develop a plan accordingly. And so if you were to look at the School Safety Audit reports, it would tell you how many of the various levels were reported as another piece of data. That is all I have for you, correct? And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wright and he will continue with more information about the School Safety Audit.
So I do appreciate you guys adopting me into your committee. I'm the newest member of the Safety and Health and Safety Advisory Committee. And as you can see, it is a robust and very deep committee with a lot. There's a lot of different pieces to this. So this is pretty basic. This is the crisis management piece of it. These are our drills. Our school administrators send a schedule to the superintendent's office that they follow and are very good at getting these things done. So we can move on to the next slide. This is a example of what is called the SRP or Standard Response Protocol. These are the posters that we have throughout our school and our classrooms and our hallways. It really talks about a common language that our first responders and our school administrators will use to make sure that we are notifying everyone using a similar language. And if you, to give an example, the word lockdown has been used over the years as lockdown, full lockdown, partial lockdown, semi-modified lockdown, to the point that no one really knows what, what exactly does that mean? There have been instances with code blue, code green, code yellow, and people forget what those are. So this makes it very clear. So for example, in a lockdown, you say lockdown locks light out of sight. There's really nothing else that needs to be said. So it's clear and precise and gets right to the point. So this is recommended by Virginia DCJS. And we, we collaborate with our first responders and our sheriff's office and are doing a good job of getting this language out. The next slide just is some examples of where we have used these. So I tried to highlight those. And Sealston, earlier this year, we went into a secure hold where because of police activity. So kids, according to the secure, get inside, lock outside doors. They came inside from a playground and remained normal school day inside and just later all the outside doors were locked. Potomac, we had a partial evacuation due to an unknown odor. So they evacuated just exactly what it said and they evacuated one of the wings. So it was very clear. And fire department came until it was ruled they could come back inside, it was safe. King George High School, we did a hold where students remained in the building. So hold in your room or area and they cleared the halls and kept all students in the hold while they investigated that situation. As a result of that, we had to implement a reunification program, which is also part of the Crisis Management Plan. That's when parents want to come check out their, their students. And there's a process for that, usually that involves someone being outside to intercept, communicate with the parents, and then there is communication going into the office. And then we have folks accountable for retrieving those, those students. And lastly, fortunately, there, there were no students in the building at this time. But you can see where things go wrong. The, the entire school was full of smoke due to a motor malfunction in a fan. The custodians were the only ones in the building at that time. They left and the fire department came in and cleared out the building and everything was good to go the next day. Had it been a school day and, and during the school hours, that would have been a whole different situation. This is also part of the climate survey piece. Talks about our short-term suspensions. Our school administrators look very closely at this in our principals' meetings. We dig a little deeper into this. And what we really look at is correlation between the population of students and the short-term suspensions. When we talk about short-term suspensions, we're talking about a suspension between one day and 10 days out of school. Those would typically be suspensions of a safety violation. Fighting, for example, would be one that, that we see use of tobacco right now as an out-of-school suspension. Certainly use of any sort of drugs would be out of school for at least 10 days. So if we see anything that is disproportionate between the percentage of students as far as the population, the percentage of, of that group of students with the, with the amount of suspension, percentage of short-term suspension incidents, then we take note. And that's where we feel that there's worthy of further review. So if you look at that, it's not, it's pretty easy to see that there is a disproportionate number between our black and white students with the percent population and the percent of short-term suspensions. So that is worthy of review and discussion. What, what is to be done with that? We'll talk about in considerations as we move forward to the end. The next slide also falls in there, the climate survey piece. And again, that is the suspensions, but instead of percentage and by groups of students or subgroups of students, we just have it laid out for you of the number of students and then the number of incidents that we've had this school year to date. So it's just information. And I can tell you that it being at three different schools previously and all high schools, it comes and goes. And these, these are things that as school administrators, we work through. And sometimes there's no rhyme or reason. But I can assure you that when the numbers are high, it's, it's, it's not that we aren't trying to do everything we can to, to make sure our students have safe places. And usually the result of fights or, you know, very extreme behavior where a student would need to be removed from, from the school. And we're working on some other alternatives to suspension because when students are out, they're not learning. And they come back, they're a little bit lost. And in addition to that, their, their calendar is chronically absent. Those days go against their unexcused absences. And that brings us to our final page, final two pages here are considerations and recommendations. These are, these, some of these are long-term, some of these are short-term, but they're all considerations in, in light of safety and, and health and safety considerations. So I'll jump right to them. The first broad category is to continue and expand our current programs supporting student health and safety and engagement. The first broad category is to continue and expand our current programs supporting student health and safety and engagement. The first bullet is to promote safety message about kindness, anti-bowling and character K-12. I think what we're doing here is wonderful and I think it's very proactive and I would love to see that continue. The second bullet is to continue to train our staff on threat assessment and threat assessment management. Once the threat assessment ends, the management begins. And that's a whole nother level of planning and it needs ongoing training for our staff in that. That student needs to be revisited and that situation needs to be maintained, just like you might maintain a 504 plan or an IEP plan, you would need to maintain a threat assessment plan. Implement training for students and staff to address new standard related to cultural competencies and expand professional learning opportunities on cultural awareness and implicit bias. This has to do not only with the standard that is in our performance evaluation, which is standard six culturally responsive and equitable schools that addresses teachers and, and school administrators. But also has to do with addressing the disproportionate data that we just saw with this one. What that looks like, it really, it boils down to self-reflection. And, and it really is training that asks us to sort of examine ourselves, examine our background, examine our, how we address students, how we address each other. And also to make us more aware of the folks that we work with, the folks that we serve and our community. Who, who makes up King George, who makes up our community and to get a better understanding of our students. All, all goes into that. The second part is to increase access. This is the second broad category to mental health services for all students. I think we spoke about the importance of this. And if you just watch the news, you understand that mental health is a broad category and a very important category within our schools and our young folks. This has to do a lot with those counseling needs and hiring and keeping them and retaining them and making sure that we're able to get qualified and certified folks. The mentioning of the elementary school counselor, the extending of those contracts, both and the social workers from 10 to 11 months just to take on some of the things that need to be done throughout the summers to prepare for the school year. And additionally, school may stop for the summer, but the needs of our, of our community does not. And we need folks in our schools and our school system to address those needs. The third category, to increase options for alternatives to exclusionary practices to improve student success. So what can we do other than kicking, kicking them out, right? Suspending students from school and it's something that we definitely need to explore. The, the, the first bullet is a long-term dream. Okay. And that would be a King George County Schools Alternative Educational Center. That would be focused for both our middle and our high school students. Right now, our middle school students do not even, they do not have an option. They do not have a place to go. So if a student needs to be suspended for more than 10 days in a, a long-term, really, we have, we have to find someone to do some sort of home-based instruction to meet them somewhere, go to, go into their home. And honestly, to find the teachers available to do that, as you know, is very difficult to do. So the idea would be to eventually have a center that would take, that would take not only the discipline pieces of these things, but would be robust enough to handle GED preparation, at-risk students, reassignment of students and diploma completion. The, in a nutshell, not every student fits in the, we have a beautiful school, King George High School and King George Middle School, but that doesn't work for every single student. And being able to provide some alternatives and an alternative placement where you, it's not because you're in trouble. And it's not because you are a discipline case, it's because you're just struggling with all the different pieces that go into the school. And a lot of times it's just the environment. So providing a different environment would be wonderful. That could be also in lieu of our Phoenix Center, which we have a limited number of seats in Stafford where we send students to regional alternative school, which is solely for discipline. So this would be something much bigger than that. The second bullet is really just a, a much easier and much more attainable in-house alternative school, which I believe and hopeful that Mr. Watson and the high school is going to try to pilot second semester. And if he can make that work, and then if that works, we would hope to, to, to get the middle school on board. And at least at a very minimum, have an in-house alternative school. So that when students are struggling, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're being suspended or they're having difficulty or they are repeated behavior of discipline. We can assign them to this alternative placement in lieu of kicking them out, in lieu of an out-of-school suspension, suspension. So they stay with us, their teachers can go in and check in on them. We have someone to help coordinate that program and build connections with the students. So we're hopeful that we will be, will be able to pilot that in the spring semester at King George High School. And eventually that over, over years can develop into that dream of an educational alternative center of lots, lots of different options. And our last broad category is to improve student safety and emergency, emergency response. Would love to see more collaboration. We already, we already have regular meetings with all the different offices and the county offices regarding safety. I would love to see that more so within our sheriff's office. I've talked to Dr. Boyd about maybe establishing quarterly meetings just because those two agencies, the schools and the sheriff's office with the, with the school resource officers being sort of that common bond. I see that we just need to work together and communicate as much as possible to increase communication capacity between all county agencies, which I think King George does a really good job of that. I would just like to continue to see that. Would like to add through a grant, which we currently have one school safety officer. Would love to add a second one at the high school and an additional one at the middle school. There would be a proportional, a percent contribution that the county would be responsible for within that grant, similar to what we have right now at the high school. The two clinic assistants that were mentioned, we would love to see those operationalized. I think those are currently under the grant funding. So those would be operational lie, operationalized hopefully in this current budget that need, would need, really needs to happen. Increase the total clinic assistance to four for next year's 2425 budget. We would love to see the lead nurse contract moved from 11 months to 12 months for the work that needs to be done there. And finally, I believe Casey has drafted a proposed policy that she was going to hand out. So she's going to come and just kind of talk, speak to that because that's a little more in-depth. I know the committee has been working on that as well.
So Ms. Fisher is handing out. This is actually just our regulation, JHCDR. We already have this. The board approved modifications to this, this earlier in the year to just change some of our wording. So you'll see further in the packet where there are some recommendations from the committee. The wording of the albuterol and the epinephrine are essentially the same as what they were before. They're just expanded to include information on training, storage and communication because we felt that that was important to include in the regulation. So both of those just have expanded information on training, storage and communication. And then the section about naloxone, like I said, that's also known as Narcan. And it would allow for all school nurses to be trained and to store Narcan, naloxone in our school buildings. It needs to be accessible to anyone who's trained, so it would not be a locked up medication. It would be used to treat a suspected case of an opioid overdose to any student, staff or visitor. So we can't just say, we're only going to treat our students. If we're trained, we're going to treat you. The training would be offered to all employees and we would allow our school nurses to service trainers. Once they receive that revived trainer certification, they would be able to train the employees in our building to provide refreshers every two years. And it says that we also recommend that they be trained or certified in CPR, AED and first aid. But again, we do offer when we require that training every year anyway for our employees. And the naloxone, like I said, would be stored easily accessible to any employees trained to be able to get that to administer it and all staff would be made aware of where that storage location is. And of course, anytime an emergency medication, especially naloxone, is administered or any suspected overdose situation, 911 and parents or guardians need to be notified. And I just added a section that this would be reviewed annually by the Health and Safety Advisory Committee to make sure that we're following the current legislation, up-to-date practice, things like that. So, and that would cover any sort of medication for emergency, undesigned use. And that undesigned stock means not for students who come with known asthma or known allergy diagnosis with a plan from their doctor. These are for those students who, oh, I didn't know I had an allergy to this and I ate it at lunch and now we need to treat you. We have standing orders to do that and that's what this regulation provides us the ability to do. So we are asking consideration that naloxone get added to that, to that ability.
Dr. Boyd, are you recommending that this be put on next month's discussion item or?
Yes, absolutely. We'll give you guys an opportunity to review it, take a look at it and we'll add it to the agenda for next board meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Is that, is that it? Well, no, that's okay. I want to thank you so much. My, my, that committee has done a massive amount of work. Would you thank them for on behalf of the school board, every one of them?
Excellent presentation, guys. I know a lot of hard work went into it and certainly appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will add this to the discussion item for the next meeting. All right, let's move on to action items, the ATI or Lab School Operating Agreement. I believe that we had quite a discussion about this at the last board meeting. And if there are no further discussions, it is an action item. And then Ms. Towery really needs to know because she wants to start the lottery process. So if there aren't, I know that there might be some discussion from Mr. Rolls and we'll have that in the discussion portion. The, if you don't mind, no, no, wait, I'm sorry, that's a legislator. Are there any other discussions? Thank you. I'm sorry, I was thinking of some phone calls I had. Thank you. Are there any more discussions or can we have a motion to approve this?
I think we can make a motion followed by discussion.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Rolls.
I move that we adopt the Academy of Technology and Innovation at UMW Operating Agreement.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, discussion, Mr. Rolls.
Yes, Matt did ask to sleep on it last time. And sleeping on it, I did thank me, I was, it's a great opportunity and excited that we can offer this to our students. But, and they did mention that the per pico cost would be lower than our average. So that's, the cost isn't really a concern. But thinking about some of the other considerations, I think, my thinking in mind was logistically. I'm looking at the fact that we got to get these students there. And I was wondering about what the impact might be because I know we currently are understaffed for bus drivers already. And so for instance, if we use the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School model to get kids to the school, which would be just getting on the buses and taking them to high school and then having to take another bus from there. That means that the, not only is that two trips and a lot of driving for them each way, but for other students, we'd be taking a, another bus driver to drive them from the high school to Fredericksburg. Where that's a bus driver who would otherwise be available to help get middle school or, and/or elementary school students to their schools more quickly. So it will probably mean lengthening some bus routes for some kids more that aren't even going to the lab school. So I just, this is a little bit different from the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School where it's lottery. So I think there's an opportunity perhaps set that up in a way that'll be more efficient. So I just hope that we'll think creatively about that as we set the lottery here in the next couple of weeks to see if there aren't some ways to improve efficiency there.
Thank you, Mr. Rolls. Any other discussion? I know we're in discussion, but Dr. Boyd, did you want to say anything to Mr. Rolls's ideas?
No, I've spoken to Dr. Towery quite a bit about some considerations. I, I do believe they've got a pretty good plan set up for the lottery. They are using a third party just to make sure that, you know, any perceived bias is removed in the lottery process. It is, anybody can, can apply, anybody can be chosen in the lottery. So I think it's a good idea to kind of take that out of our hands as far as choice. And then really also out of the hands of the lab school. It's going to be done entirely by almost a computer program that'll pick those students randomly. As those students will be picked randomly, it will, to Mr. Rolls's point, create potentially some challenges for transportation when it comes to getting students to the lab school. That was a consideration all along our, our conversations with many other school divisions. I can tell you Caroline specifically had a lot of conversations as it retained to the distance between the lab school and Caroline County. Currently, as Mr. Rolls pointed out, we do have a couple of models that we have in place now. We've got a few students that attend alternative education opportunities. Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, those students will take their neighborhood bus to the school in the morning and then take a one single bus from the high school to the Bowling Green campus for the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School students. And in this instance, it would be to the Stafford Campus for, for the, the technology students, the ATI students. We'll have to see how that pans out as we go. That, that's probably the model that we'll employ. It'll depend on, on who is considered for the program, where they're coming from. There'll be some other considerations made right now. I haven't told you guys this yet, but we do, we were just approved our, I was going to have it in my superintendent's con, comments this evening. The all-in plan, the plan that the governor recommended, we received $1.3 million from the state for. That was to focus on tutoring, literacy and attendance initiatives. Part of that plan, as you guys know, we've had a lot of conversation about after-school programs, after-school tutoring. Our biggest barrier to after-school programs is transportation. So in our plan, we included 10 passenger vans. We started with 12 passenger vans. We, we talked to VACOR, VACOR had some reservations about 12 passenger vans, but they're good with 10 passenger vans. So we were approved a couple of 10 passenger vans in, in the plan because 10 passenger vans do not require a CDL driver to drive those vans. So again, we're trying to get creative. Those vans could, I say that because those vans could during the daytime be a possibility for transportation. So we're trying to think in a, in a number of different ways of how to get the students around as we, we and every other school division, probably in the country, is having a challenging time finding certified CDL drivers. So I tell you that, to that point. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you very much. All right, if there are no further discussion, then we have a motion and we have it seconded to approve the operating agreement for the Academy of Technology and Innovation at UMW. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Here votes aye, motion carries unanimously. We will sign the agreement. Thank you very much. All right, next is this, the outline of the hearing before the board. We've discussed this in several occasions. And I do believe, hopefully we have something that we can all agree with. I believe the changes that the last time that we talked about have been made. Hopefully all of the board members had a chance to look at it. So do I, since this has already been discussed, do I have a motion since we do have as an action item?
I move that we adopt policy JGD slash JGE P1 and P2.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, do we have any discussion?
I think I, I wasn't, can you cover the changes? I didn't, I didn't notice that there were.
I believe that our last changes are still here. There's on page one, if you're looking at it. It says both phases of the hearing will be conducted in closed session. Upon returning to open session, the King George County School Board will vote on whether to approve the disciplinary actions. to approve the disciplinary actions discussed and documented in closed session." I believe that's repeated in a couple of places.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I thought you said something different. I'm, I'm good.
Well, I'm sorry. Okay, so you're satisfied, Mr. Rolls?
Right, I mean, I'll just mention that this is the continuation of the discussion we had before that I'm still not in favor of the general idea. I mean, the updates I know are better, reflect the, what appears to be the will of the board, so that part's fine, but I'll just be voting against because of the general idea of wanting to have more transparency rather than less.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Since it's, let's have an individual vote, just want to be sure, let's start over here with Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Hawk.
Aye.
This, Mr., Ms. Hoover.
I believe I'm okay with it. I'm just refreshing my memory.
Okay. And while you're waiting, Ms. Hoover, Mr. Rolls?
Nay.
I'm okay with it.
All right, and Chair also votes aye, so please signify. It was motion carries, vote of four to one. Thank you, Ms. Rinko. All right, let's move on to these policy manual updates and I believe all of these were discussed last time. So if there's one that would like to be, I'd like to look at approving these because of time, we could approve these all together. Obviously, we'll name them individually, however, we won't do that if any board member feels as though one of these should be pulled out.
Mr. Chair, we did pull out the two last time that there was discussion about and those.
Yes, but those are under discussion, yes, thank you. We are going to have those, in fact, those were the JEC and JACA, those are under discussion, those were pulled out and so we'll continue discussion of those. But except for those, I believe last time, the rest of these were okay, except for those two, and we'll talk about those in a moment. So any other discussion about these or do, did we pull one out so we can approve the rest? Okay, if we're okay with that, then a motion, and the motion would have to, basically you'd have to read each one of these in the motion and then it would be seconded. So can I have a motion?
I move that we accept the policy manual updates for policy EB, EB dash R, GAB slash IIBEA, GBE, GBE dash R, GCL and IL, and JFC, and JFCF.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. All right, that ends the action items and now discussion items. And this will begin with the one that's more of a consensus, as Ms. Gonzalez pointed out. You could, we could take a vote on it, but in a way, let's look for a consensus and hopefully we get one. But let's look at these items and Mr. Rolls, we will, I am, my understanding is you're willing to look at these knowing we have to have a consensus, we can take it with me next, with us next week. And I am the representative, by the way, and I do appreciate last year, Ms. Gonzalez being the rep, but this year it will be me. And so let's look at these if we don't mind and we're looking for a consensus and then after we discuss this, we will have a further discussion, Mr. Rolls, as you had suggested. All right, the first one, if you, if all the board members can turn to it, either if you print it out or on the board docs, there's four legislative proposals that we need to take and we need to have the board's consensus, at least where we are with this. And the items below, as I'm just reading parts of this, if you don't mind, the items below, the underlying language is new language and is proposed to be added to the VSBA legislative positions and then the strike, the ones that are struck out is proposed to be removed from the VSBA legislative position handbook. So the first one was proposal number one, and that is school facility construction funds and financing. And if you'll notice there that they have some new language, which is underlined, I would rather not read the whole thing, but we can if you wish. I'll maybe make, I'll read the first paragraph and then especially if the underlying ones are the addition that they are recommending. "The VSBA urges the Virginia General Assembly and the US Congress to provide substantial and sustained funding to finance local school construction, renovation and debt service costs with disbursements to local school boards." And here is the underlying portion that they would like to add, "including specific incentives for safety, security upgrades to better protect students and staff, as well as incentives for energy-efficient construction and renovation to reduce the lifetime operating cost of the school facilities." Then they have the reasoning and then the rationale. So this first one, is there a discussion? I think.
I have no concerns about it.
Anybody else?
No.
I think this is actually excellent. You know, we're obviously concerned about the school safety and they added this portion and I think it's a great idea. And of course, you can see it was proposed by Warren County and it was accepted by VSBA, so it sounds like I have a consensus. Do, all right.
Please.
Let me make a note. All right, the next one is the employee criminal background checks. And again, let me read the first parts. I won't necessarily go through all the rationales unless there's a question. "The VSBA supports legislation to provide state funding to conduct federal and state criminal background checks for all new employees." Small change here. "Calls for the State Department of Education to establish a state clearinghouse for the results of such criminal background checks," and then here's the new portion, "and supports the state fully funding local participation in Virginia's implementation of the Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI, Next Generation Identification, NGI, non-criminal justice wrap-back service regarding reporting and notification of public school employee misconduct." Basically, they're asking the, the state to help fund this is the bottom.
So the real emphasis here is, they want all school divisions to adhere to this background check program, which is beneficial for everyone because when everyone's into this program, it's a more comprehensive program as far as background checks are concerned. And secondly, the cost right now is $12 annually per employee in the division. So the VSBA is asking for funding to support that additional cost that school divisions will take on because of prescribing to this program.
Right. Again, obviously considering our budget, this, I mean, it wouldn't devastate us, but it would hurt us. So I think this is personally a good thing, but other comments?
Absolutely in favor of it.
All right, Mr. Rolls, you had a comment?
Yes, not sure that I'm in favor. I mean, we only have, had a very short time to look at this, but it always seems like a no-brainer to ask for more money, but me, as it already reads, we're doing background checks and it looks like in the rationale, it talks about, I'm thinking maybe this would be voluntary, maybe it wouldn't be, but just, in a limited time, I had a look and I watched some coverage from a local news station on it and it was talking about elements of how, what that NGI thing would be like and, I mean, there's like some digital fingerprinting and other things like facial recognition that as they showed it, it looked, you know, eerily similar to the kind of technology that China uses to track and control its population. So I think at a minimum, there could be some privacy concerns for, you know, future prospective employees.
So you're not against the background checks, it's just that maybe it's too invasive? Is that?
Right, so I think maybe it's traditional background checking better. Again, I have done extensive research, but, so I think my default position would just be not to support things if it doesn't, if it's not nearly obvious that it's a good idea.
Well, there will be opportunity to me, for me to make comments, even though we could be in consensus of this and still I can bring your concerns. So let me be sure I understand though, is if it was a general background check, say just with the FBI's, they would do one, you'd probably feel better about it, they get a little bit into this next generation stuff, that's what you're concerned with? I want to be sure I understand.
Right, so the legislative proposal is to add that language and I'd prefer just not to add the language, just keep it as it is, it's already advocating for background checks, just not the next generation identification.
Would you be okay with the FBI's and not the next generation or just the fact they use that would be a concern?
Well, I mean, when you're there, it's just going to be, you're going to vote up or down, so I would prefer to vote down the change, just keep it as it currently is without the.
Would you be okay with him funding it?
It's a, it's a yes or a no, so I would, I would rip it now.
Well, I was, I went to the meeting and there is a possibility for discussion of some of these, unless I misunderstood the meeting. Past years, go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez, you've been there.
Yeah, so they won't, they won't, they won't change it on the spot. They'll take, before they vote, right, they'll, you can, if you, if your board is going to oppose a position, you can, you are given an opportunity to speak to it during the assembly.
I guess, well, it's, yeah, a few days ago, they had an hour's kind of presentation about this and one of them kind of referred to this kind of thing, what happens if we had concerns, we vote one specific way, they say a yes, but we had concerns. He did say there'd be opportunities to express those, even if we voted yes.
Yes, right.
So I will express that, Mr. Rolls, but we still need, do I have a consensus? I realize that you would rather not, is that correct? Okay, Ms. Hoover, what's your feeling?
I am okay with it.
You're okay? Ms. Gonzalez? Ms. Hawk?
I'd, I'd like to say I'm very strongly in favor of this and if you do bring forward any concerns, I, I think you need to be clear that it is one person only.
Well, I would, oh, I, yeah.
And certainly not the, the concern of a larger board. I, I think this is, we're already doing, Ms. Yuzersky and Ms. Gordon are already doing as much as they can, given that our budget is minimal and that we've not had any assistance from state or federal levels in terms of funding. This would increase our capacity and frankly, I can't imagine any circumstance that we would not want more information about potential child offenders, child molesters, that we would not want any extra information about people of, from moving across state borders or international borders and that's what these expanded checks would give us more opportunity to know. And, and frankly, I think the more we can have it, the better.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. I do understand what you're saying, Mr. Rolls, because there is a concern that sometimes these things can be, they can extend farther than we, what we thought they would when they're first presented. So it will be a yes and I will try to in some way say that I did have one board member that was slightly concerned about this, but especially the finance, finance part I think is absolutely good. And I agree with you, Ms. Hawk, there are some concerns there. So basically, it's four of us definitely, so we have a consensus there. So let's go to proposal number three. "The Schools Own Safety Standards." "The Virginia School Boards Association supports additional local authority and flexibility in setting safety standards in school zones." That's a whole new position here, as you can tell because it's underlined and the rationale, I will read some of this, it's not that long, but since this is new and not just simply an addition or small change. "Pedestrian safety around schools has become an increasingly important issue with an unfortunately growing number of recent tragic accidents. While pedestrian safety is a priority in every jurisdiction, the issue is particularly important where highways are not controlled by the locality and where local input in the specifics of where and how school crossing zones are configured is not as direct. Greater local authority and flexibility over such issues as the determination of appropriate motor vehicle speeds around schools, as well as over signage and signals within school crossings would assist local school divisions in prioritizing this important safety issue." So again, they're proposing that they have additional local authority and the flexibility in setting the safety standards in local school zones. Discussions? Sure. Mr. Rolls?
It's actually vaguely vague statement, so I don't, it makes you wonder what all they're going to do with that.
Sorry, makes you wonder what?
He said it's extremely vague, so he was wondering what they're really going to do with that.
So I mean, I base the main feedback, I mean, obviously they add some, some stuff in the rationale, but that's not what actually will go into the proposal. All that being the proposal is the language added there, so I guess just at least give them the feedback, that's probably that'd be more specific.
You wish there was more information about this proposal?
Just the actual language they use should be more specific, just hey, we want additional local authority. I mean, in general, I'll see local control is important, it makes sense.
Right.
But I don't, yeah, I don't know what all that means, like they want to have, yes, I don't know, like, because there's not much there.
Okay, well, this is some.
I mean, it sounds, obviously it sounds innocuous enough, but.
Would you like possibly even next year, when we look at this, is maybe taking something like this and we as a board making some very specific recommendations?
I mean, unless there's like a really pressing need, I don't know that we need to lobby the assembly, so I probably wouldn't.
Okay, all right.
You know, in fact, this probably doesn't really matter for King George at all.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts on this?
So, sure, go ahead. Sheriff, I may, I guess I would, I would disagree with that, that it's like, you know, I, I know, right, there's a, they've just evaluated like the crosswalk and the light situation around the middle school and that sort of thing. I mean, I would argue, all this is doing is providing VSBA the backing to lobby for additional, I mean, local control, right? Isn't that what we, that's like often the desire, right? So, you know, we, if there's a need in King George, such as there is with the middle school, right, I mean, that's a little bit separate from this, but it would allow the schools to be like, hey, you know, we think we want to go advocate for a crosswalk or something, right? I mean, I think.
Or even change.
As opposed to what? You said there's a study and was that done by VDOT or?
Wait, 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 let her finish.
I mean, I, I just, it's, it's not, it's not dictating how it's executed. It's simply, it's simply granting more authority and flexibility to school divisions to address needs specific to them and their roads and their traffic situations and.
Speed limits or whatever.
It baffles me how we would think that that wasn't something good.
But you just mentioned it as a, an example and I'd like to know more like the example, so how would, how would this change that in any way? I mean, are you saying it's, you're reading it as giving more authority from maybe VDOT, like the state level agency to school boards? Is that what you think it says?
Okay, we'll have one more comment from Ms. Gonzalez.
I mean, it says local authority and flexibility, which to me sounds like it's giving you the option to go pursue means of addressing challenges and issues that you have.
Mr. Rolls, last, oh, I'll, I'll give you, let him just, let Mr. Rolls and respond to that and then you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Rolls, any last comment in response to Ms. Gonzalez's?
I'll let Ms. Hawk go first, I don't have anything else.
All right, Ms. Hawk.
Very frankly, thank you. I'm completely in agreement with having this and my concern is that if it were any more specific, then it, it undermines the essential part of the issue in terms that it provides local determination, that, that gives us more regulation in terms of, we know the safety of Potomac Elementary, for example, or the backside of the high school coming, the high school and middle school merging. There are, there are those very specific kinds of things that we know, but it would have to, if it needed, if you wanted it more specific, then it negates the whole pro, the whole, the whole purpose of the proposal in, to make it a local discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hoover, did you have any comments with this?
I don't.
Well, looking at this, I tend to agree with what both of you were saying. I am, well, you probably already know this and Mr. Rolls I know is too, is I am really in favor of as much local autonomy as we can have. And I understand what you're saying, especially Ms. Hawk, is that I think, Mr. Rolls, this is just my opinion, of course, if they were to be more specific, it would begin to be in the micromanaging kind of thing. And then it would be, because what we might want would be different than what Caroline might want. And so I like this general thing is to give more authority to us here locally and not be much more specific. Now, maybe helping with funds, I agree with that piece, but otherwise, I kind of like this. So I think we've heard from everybody who wants to speak on this and so I need to kind of hear if there's some sort of consensus and this time I'll go from one to another and I'll start with Ms. Hoover this time. Are you in agreement with this?
I'm in agreement, yes.
Mr. Rolls?
I mean, if it is being state versus locality, which maybe that is what they mean, then I mean, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so you're, you agree? All right, you agree, Ms. Hawk?
Absolutely.
All right, so it's unanimous. All right, let's go to number four, the last one. "This is judicial enforcement of truancy. The VSBA strongly encourages judicial proceedings to follow a standard timeline with automatic action taken at each step of the truancy timeline. The courts have established outcomes prescribed by the Board, the Code of Virginia and Virginia legal statutes that allow for specific actions in relation to truancy matters for both the student and the parent slash guardian. The request is that a firm, fair and timely implementation of those outcomes be standardized and practiced in each courtroom in the Commonwealth of Virginia." And I just had one little part in the rationale that I thought would be valuable to read. "The whole school is accountable through accreditation for issues outside of school control is unfair and punishes schools for decisions that rest outside of the school control, control. The VSBA should voice concern through lobby and publication of the need for a judicial branch to enforce regulations and law pertaining to, A, parents who do not take steps to curb absenteeism," and they list. A, parents who do not take steps to curb absenteeism, and they list the Virginia Code, and then B, students who defy parental actions and school policies by continuing absence from school. Again, they reference a Virginia Code. So this is basically saying that they would like the courts to obviously have more control and, well, I don't need to restate it, it's pretty clear, I think, there. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to speak to this because I feel so very strongly about this. Having started out in life as, with this system, as a case manager and truancy officer, and worked with the court systems throughout this, this process, and, and I have seen many, many times where we, we as a school system bring the information to the court, and because of a number of reasons over the years, each judge may make a separate decision, there is local variety, then there's variety of decisions across counties, across divisions, regions. This would hopefully bring some standardization to the, to the state truancy process because it is a judicial process initiated by the school system, but a very interactive process. And, I mean, at this point in time, we have one person to enforce attendance regulations in our school division. And I, I handpicked Mr. Smith, he's a perfectly competent person who is facing overwhelming odds. So this would hopefully bring support from the judicial system. I don't know how accurate it will be in terms of, sometimes judges don't always accept us telling them what we want, and so perhaps they would be more receptive to more information coming from a higher authority. So yes, I'm very much in favor of it.
Other discussions? Mr. Rolls?
I expected you to say, Mrs. Huck, because I was thinking back to when we talked about this in the summer in the middle school, concerns about, and, and as I think of the time, I didn't say it, that I really don't see it as a school, you know, function or, or reflection of the school reporting these absentee numbers, it shouldn't, that we read, we read back, Mr. Bush as well, about affecting our accreditation. I don't see why it should affect the school's accreditation, I really see it more as a parental issue. I mean, I'm very much for parental rights, we talk about that a lot, but there's also parental responsibility. So, yeah, I do think this is a good.
Are you in favor of this?
I am in favor of it, yes.
If there's an "I am" too, I think it will give more tools for our truancy officer, it'll give him some more power. So basically, it's unanimous. Oh, I asked her already, I already, don't worry, I'm checking with everybody.
I was just so excited.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, Dr. Boyd, the last two, I haven't asked your opinion. Did you have any opinion?
No, I'm certainly in favor of this one as well. I agree with much of what Ms. Huck said, there's some inconsistencies across different localities in the state. And this will provide schools an extra layer of support when it comes to addressing chronic absenteeism. It's certainly more than just a school issue, it's a community issue. It's one that will involve many folks coming to the table and, and coming up with solutions. So I'm very much in favor of this.
All right, good. Well, I have a yes on all of them, with a concern of one board member on one of them. All right, we are going to move on. I will take that to the legislative meeting that we're having next week, in about 10 days or so. And next on our discussion item, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rolls, you wanted to discuss a little bit more about the whole idea of this legislative positions with VSB, so.
Right, after, Mrs. Gonzalez brought up that we hadn't seen them yet, last meeting, I called EBSBA JT Custer, who's in charge of this there, to ask about it. One of the things he mentioned, as he was pointing to where these were, was that they had made a change for this year, which I think is a very good one. That was, they had received complaints about not being as transparent as they should be. And so they went ahead and included some of the proposals that were turned down by the committee this year, as opposed to only putting the ones forward that they had passed. So I looked through those, and I did see that a lot of them came from Warren County, and a lot of them actually were, were quite good, good. And there's a concern that they were all put down unanimously by the legislative position committee. So I think it's something to maybe look into, whether that's something we want to get more involved in, and it's worth the time and effort to do that. Because it is a general concern with this whole thing, that the VSB will take whatever the majority decides the positions and say, hey, this is what the VSB says, and we represent all the school boards in the, in the state, so you should listen to us. When, maybe, there might be a significant number that don't support a particular position, and that doesn't get heard. But I guess going on to give some examples, I mean, I'm not going to go through all the ones that were turned down, and there are some, like I said, several very good ones, but one that's particularly, you know, affects us is actually directly contrary to one of our, our local policies that the VSB is advocating for, and will say that they represent us on this, when obviously they do not, because it's contrary to what we've passed. I'm scrolling, but I'm not fine, but just from memory, like, they have a position that Warren County recommended striking, where the VSB is lobbying to have an annual required, annual reporting requirement for religious exemption, and we specifically said that we did not want that in our policy.
I did see that, I'm glad they struck it down.
So, yeah, I think we should look into this in general, and about how we want to be heard, and whether, I'll give a job VSB does communicating what our priorities are. And so seeing that, that so many of Warren Counties got shut down, I looked them up, and I was looking curious. And so I guess what it was, they had similar concerns in the past, and so they decided to just get real involved and make proposals and see what happened. And so they did that, and one of the ones that we, that got passed was from them, but then they also had quite a few that got turned down. So I think what I saw in the end, they ended up deciding this past September to withdraw from the VSB. So now, I guess the VSB at least, they can't say they represent every county in the state. So it is good to have some way to represent the diversity of viewpoints from the school boards, I think, better than what seems to currently be the case.
So are you, I'm, I'm hearing two things. One is that maybe we as a board in the future would maybe have a committee or a subcommittee or whatever, people that would consider legislation that we would present to VSB, like Warren County did. And number two, or also number two, is that we be, are requested to be on this committee, the Legislative Positions Committee for VSB, one or both?
Yeah, I don't know, I may just look into it to get educated on it, because we've not, to date, in my two years in the board, made any proposals or been involved in any of these committee votes. So I don't know to what extent it's worth our time, but just to look into it and be more aware.
That's good, I'll, I'll, I'll look into it more, thank you. Any other about this discussion? Okay, did, especially, I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm pointing, picking on you, Ms. Gonzalez, because you've been there, but has there been any concerns? It's interesting, I didn't know that the Warren County has now withdrawn from VSB. That's very interesting, because they, I guess, turned down several of their concerns. Has there those kind of things ever been discussed at your last meetings, Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, so the, I mean, the delegate assembly really only meets to, like, vote on the rights. Unless you're on the legislative committee, right, you're not engaged in that. So, I mean, that, the, the assembly is just walking through voting, right? There hasn't been, there's not discussion about that otherwise, right?
And I will see what we can do. Are you interested on being on that committee, Mr. Rolls, if, on this?
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm interested in getting a little more educated about it.
I agree with that.
And, Sheriff, if you may, I would like to also ask another question, Mrs. Gonzalez, we're on the topics, and she's been there in the past. So I just get the impression that if it gets past the committee, it gets voted in. It seems very hard for anything to get turned down. So have you ever seen a position not get approved that got passed the committee?
I've not, they've all, I feel like, yeah, I think in the last few years that I've done it, they all pass by about like 75%. So the vast majority of the assembly is voting in favor of the positions. There may be some, I mean, I could be wrong in one or two cases, but in general, they're typically favored by the majority of the assembly.
I'd say, my understanding is, reading through some of this 164-page document, is that it is a simple majority, is that correct? In other words, over 50%, 51%?
I'd have to go back and look, they're all like 75%. They've never even been close to 55% in the time that I recall. But I forgot, I'd have to go back and look, like, specifically at the terminology and to see if, if it's just a majority or 50%.
When everything I read, it looked like just a simple majority. But, you know, sometimes these things say two-thirds, but you don't remember it.
I don't recall.
That sounds right, Mr. Bush, I think, there was a mention of two-thirds, but I think that was to maybe change something on the spot, or introduce something new, was two-thirds.
I think you're right. I remember something the other day in this one-hour meeting that they were and there was something about two-thirds, and that was probably it. I'll, I'll find out more, Mr. Rolls. Did you get a chance to read that, or do you have a copy of that 164-page document? I'm sorry.
I have it, I have it all, I skimmed very much.
I'm sorry, well, we might want to read through that a little bit more, too. All right, thank you very much, move, to move on, we've been here a long time. Have a few more things to discuss. Okay, the school board evaluation. I did finally get, so obviously, it's not on board docs, because I just got everybody's, the last one I got this morning. I won't make it say any names here, though, but I'm just appreciative. So obviously, I just printed something out. It's okay, all right, I'm not, I didn't want to point anybody out, Ms. Huck. Let me make sure I can get some semblance of order in this. This is front and back, you're going to have to forgive me there, and then you'll go like this, all right? So I did not actually list the whole protocol, so you're going to have to look on board docs. But I did list the number, obviously. All right, we've got extra pages, sorry. Okay, if you'll go to the board docs, and then you'll see the number, and I did put everybody's input, it's on a simple spreadsheet. So let's all go to the board docs for a moment, and I believe they did show the norms and protocols, and that's what we used. And there was this repeat on four and five, which obviously everybody caught. And I tried to go back and find the original document when we met with the, at VSB, with Ms. Gina Patterson, and what was his name, Tom, whatever. And I couldn't find that original document, all I could find was from a year ago, and four and five is still identical. So we're just going to, obviously, we, five is a duplicate. In terms of the norms, the protocols are all separate. So if you look on the tabulation that I gave, let's, I want to focus on those that are lower scores, and those that are kind of above four, or at least close to four, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on. And the first norm, if you look at, it was a 3.8, and again, that's pretty close to four. There doesn't seem to be a major concern with that. Number two, there was a concern, and then if you'll read the comments that were written there, and this one has to do is the chair or designee will speak as the official voice of the board. A single board member will not represent the board without the consent of the board, and board members making personal statements in any format, including speeches, articles, social posts, et cetera, should clearly state that these statements are their opinion and not the position of the board. And there was a concern by one person that the board chairman, me, this year, that I, let me see, there were occasions this year when the chairperson was perceived to be representing the school board without board consensus. One example is this, was attending a meeting with the county supervisor with individuals seeking to do business with the county without board notice or consent. A second example was proposing to meet with the general assembly candidates to discuss school priorities with board without board consensus. I can tell you that those two meetings are true, and I did not represent the board in any way, but I had some very serious concerns, and I didn't even know, such as I was getting phone calls and emails about this Amazon project, and it's like I was totally ignorant. And so I called one of the board supervisors, that one suggested I meet with the chairman of the board and say, you know, tell me about it, because some of the concerns were things like, this is going to affect Sealston Elementary, and there's going to be electrical lines going close to that, possibly. And that they're, they're saying that we're going, they're going to be able to build more schools because of all the revenue, so I had a lot of questions, but that's what they were. They were questions, and I, and, and both of those meetings with the individual and with the chairman, I simply said, I am not representing the board, but I want to know. And if you remember, at one of the board meetings, I even said to the rest of the board, when they were having a public forum about this at the board of supervisors concerning this large project with Amazon, that I would recommend that we all go to that and listen, because it's pretty important. So anyway, I did not represent the board, though, and I made it very clear, I needed questions, I wanted to know. And the second one, when I did meet with a candidate, and it did, I wrote all of you an email, and I said that, obviously, we can't do this as a board. We could possibly, it'd be a whole different format, but I would like one person to join me, and if I have anybody that would like to, I'm going to be making some phone calls to meet with some of the general assembly people. And I had two people that said, yes, I would like to, if you're going to do that, I'd like to be there just to listen to what their ideas are, what they might do for King George County. I won't say their names, but both of them, we were going to split the time. I was going to meet with this person, and I did get one delegate that agreed. And that person did meet with me, and then this other person on the board, we were together. And then there was an agreement that the second person then would come, and there'd still just be two of us. So at no time would there be three of us meeting with this person. Yeah, one of the two board members, they, something happened and they couldn't come. So we spent the time with two of us for a period of time, and then I stayed a little bit longer with her, and she answered, the delegate answered a whole lot of questions, which was wonderful. I mean, I was really glad to hear that person's position. And that was it, so, anyway.
So, Mr., yeah, Mr. Chair, so those are as, those are my comments. I would argue, especially in the case of the second, with meeting with general assembly candidates, if, nevertheless, even if you're only conven, meeting as, you know, one person, it was brought to the board as a board subject for discussion, right, that you were looking for folks to attend with you. And if you're going to be meeting with an assembly representative, it would stand to reason that it makes sense to back that process up, have a discussion as a board as to what topics would the board collectively representing the King George County School Board would like to see put forward and discuss with said delegate, and then I think there's, it's fine to meet with them. Regardless of, I still think if you're going to meet with one, you should meet with all those candidates across parties. So the, in my opinion, the perception is the big piece of that, and the same goes to the comment about the Amazon representatives, right? Understand, we all are citizens, we all care, we all care about the schools, but the perception, as it was related to me, by concerned supervisors, right, is they, there's representation of the school board by one board member, which is not, which is not appropriate. And so I would, and just from, I know it's a little outside the scope of this particular one representing the board, but, right, you know, we all get, we all get questions and concerns from folks about things, because we're local elected officials, and not everyone knows where the right question is directed. And I would suggest going forward, right, I mean, if I were to receive a question about the impact of this, you know, you refer, refer those to the board who's dealing with that, right? I mean, obviously, the schools need to be part of it, there's county strategic planning as a part of that, right? But I, I do not think it's appropriate for us, the school board members, to be meeting in that capacity.
Even to ask questions? If I'm, if I'm making statements?
With a super, with another supervisor, I, I think the perception.
I meet with, I talk to other supervisors all the time.
Understood, it's the represent, like, with other outside represent, it's a perception, it's just a perception.
I appreciate that, and I will be cautious of that, thank you. But I just want to assure the public and the rest of the school board that I never represented anybody. In fact, I never even really made any, I would suggest you do this kind of comments, or this is my idea, or this is the board, I never, and if I had, I would have still said it just for me, but I didn't do that, I just asked questions, that's all I did. But thank you, I will be moving forward, yes.
I would submit that I don't know what reasonable person would think that a school board member would be offering a kind of advice on an Amazon, whatever you want to call the thing, the data center, I mean, it doesn't really have anything to do with the school. So, yeah, obviously, clearly, you're there as, as a citizen. And I can also attest the fact that you're very clear with the delegate that no one was representing the board at that meeting. And from the more, I do understand that you invited all, represented all candidates, it wasn't like, it was only one that responded, so it's not up to you who responds.
My ask to that, are we going to get a board report out of how that meeting went with the delegates' name and so on and so forth? That would seem to be something appropriate to share with the board.
Because she said so much, it was two hours of her, I thought she was going to spend 10 minutes, and she talked for two hours.
Understood, even just discussing, just the delegate, we haven't even mentioned the name, I think, in the spirit of transparency.
I can mention it now.
It's to not be extracted, it's to be forthcoming with information about things that you're doing as a school board member, and if you're meeting with a delegate, any delegate, it's appropriate to report that on a board comment at the next meeting.
It's a good point, and I did, was it since the last meeting I met with her? Yeah, it was, that was last week, right? I'm sorry, I'm losing track. So it was just recent, it wasn't like it was a long time ago, but that's a good point. And I think I can probably, I will send you an email of everything I can remember of what she said. I do remember two or three things very clearly that she said, but thank you, that's a good point, I'll do that. Appreciate that, but I did not represent, I listened, because I wanted to know what she might do. Cause I wanted to know what she might do.
Understood, but you asked the board.
To also.
Right, right. So at, but we can't all, we can't all join you because then it's a public meeting. That's the whole, the whole point of the conversation.
All right. I will do that. And that's a good suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Um, I, I was concerned uh, and yes, you did inform us about the, the process that was happening. My concern was that you were meeting with candidates, not actual delegates. And it was open to all candidates. But I, I'm not sure that we as board members, board members per se, should be meeting with individual candidates. Because that, that implies some endorsement.
This, this was a suggestion by V S B A. They suggested that we do it.
I understand that and I, that's, I would have a problem with that from the S, V S B A. But the point being that if we as a, as a full board had a meeting with candidates, have them.
Oh yeah, that's a whole different.
That's a whole different process. But, but to, to have individual meetings with candidates was very concerning to me.
And actually it was that we had three candidates and I wish some of you could have also attended that V S B A conference because three, there were two senators and one delegate. And they suggested this. In fact, they said, please, all of you school board members have meetings with, don't have meetings with the current, that's what they said. Do not have meetings with the current delegates. Have meetings with those that are running for office because then you will hear the things, the bills they're going to be proposing. Because if you wait until January, that's too late to hear about any of this because they'll already have it in mind. Anyway. But thank you for the comments. That's very, very helpful. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Now, number two or number three was uh, we will be mindful of the different roles and responsibilities throughout the school system and maintain a focus on policy and governance. And um, overall as a 3.6, there was, somebody put a two down. And I had no comment though. You see, if there was a comment, I wrote it here. So I'm not sure. Everybody else put a four, which is fine. That means it was good. So I'm not sure what the two meant. And if, if we don't have a comment, we'll just move on because I'm not sure what that person meant. By whether we're not doing that as we should. If I don't hear anything, then we will go on. Number four. We also had, we will be aware of the different roles that we play as individual board members and one person, we had in fact, a couple of fives, a three and a four. And again, for the um, community that's listening, obviously we're doing this in open session for the community that's listening. Because unless we're talking about individuals, of course, we did talk about me a little bit, but that's not a big deal. That I believe this should be an open session. Okay. So that's why we're doing this and uh, please forgive us for taking the time, but I think it's important. All right. So going on uh, and number four, it, well, there was one person that put a two down as to not understanding the different roles possibly. But again, no comment. So if somebody, one board member would like to talk about that. If not, we'll go on. It is something I think to be aware of for sure. Number five was a duplicate. Number six was pretty high. It was um, all fours and one three. So the average, who did you want to say something? No. Okay. All right. Uh, obviously number six was a 3.8, which is basically a four and the average was 3.7, which is a four, which means overall that we did fairly good, not excellent, but we can look at some things and thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I will take some of your, and Ms. Hulk, some of your examples into uh, consideration in the future. Um, and also whoever the board chair next year might be uh, would also, it would be good to heed to some of those concerns. All right. And the protocols, beginning with number one. Again, we had uh, three fives and two threes, which is a 4.2. And the one comment was there is that it was much improved. Which I think is a good comment. Let's uh, let me move on. All right. Um, let's move down. The only one, let's go down to number eight because all the rest of those are between four and five. Number eight was only an average of 3.8 if you can look on there. So that was a concern with a couple of people and it says, communication between board members and staff, including requests for information. Board members should contact the superintendent directly with any requests for information. And there was a couple of threes on there. I just think that uh, I again, think this is improving. But um, I do believe that it um, it is something we all need to be concerned with. And that is that if we need some information for some of the staff, we should uh, as much as possible, go through the superintendent. Um, I think that's very valuable um, to do that. So that way the superintendent is very aware and that, that staff member um, may contact you individually after that, but letting Dr. Boyd know ahead of time. And then he would determine whether saying, yes, go ahead and call that person or I will take care of it. And let him, let Dr. Boyd be the conduit. Any comments about that one? All right. Let's go down. We have to number 12. That was a 3.8. We did have a couple of concerns there. It's still a pretty high score. And that is the, and there was a comment made with that one. Number 12 was the school board um, use of social media. The school board members should keep in mind of the difference between a personal and an official page. Board members should always also be aware that anything they post on social media can be construed as their position on the school board. And then uh, the comment was, I'm not really on social media, so I'm not too sure about this, but hearsay, I think some members of the public may have had some concerns here. So I don't really look at those very much. And so it'll have to come up from some other board members. Was there a concern that there was some possible comments made on social media? That may have been thought personal, but they were not considering they were a board member. Has that been a concern? It is something we all need to be careful of. We know that we've had articles about people that have not done that, that you can never really to some degree, take your school, school board hat off, especially here in King George. Okay, um, go on to the last page. We've got number 17. Um, still it was a 3.8, which of course is not bad. Um, but there was um, a couple of threes. Number 17, expectations for participation in meetings and conferences. Board members are expected to attend schedules, local board meetings and to come prepared to discuss agenda items. So a couple of us put just average with that and the others put either excellent or good. So any comments from those that might have put that as an average score? I'll be honest with you. Last year, when I was first on the board, there were a couple of meetings I came and um, I was prepared. It's interesting. I think it's valuable here and as a board chair, I've learned this, is you really have to look at every single item. I would glance at some of them and I'd say, ooh, I got a problem with this one, but then I wouldn't look at the other ones as carefully. It's pretty important that as much as possible, that all the board members look at all the items. And that when they come, if they have a concern with it, they come prepared. I think that's important. Anybody want to make a comment on that?
I would say we improved this year over last year.
Yeah, I think we did. I know I personally have. I'm better prepared than I was last year. That's for sure. I'll just admit that. It's always good that we can be honest, right? All right. Uh, number 19, 3.8. We had a couple of threes there. Um, and let me read that one. Number 19, when and how the board conducts itself as self-evaluation, the school board evaluates itself the second to the last meeting of the calendar year. I don't remember doing that last year. Uh, this is the, the meets that qualification if we do complete this today. And so I think it is a concern and the comment was, we're just getting started at this. I expect it's something that will improve in the coming years. We should have a discussion item before, along before how this went and improvements that we'd like to see. I agree. This year I thought obviously we developed this as kind of our guidelines for, to follow last year. And so I thought this should be a tool that would be obvious that we would look at to evaluate ourselves. Have we done these things? So that's the reason I used that this year and I just put it in a little bit of a rubric. Obviously it wasn't too difficult. Um, and we can even discuss this. I, I could not. I know there was a discussion about whether this should have gone into closed session. But everything I looked about closed session, it just didn't seem to fit. However, as I mentioned in the last meeting, if we felt there was going to be a long discussion about one individual, then there would have been a reason to do that. All right. Number 20.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On that. Uh, so I did attempt to contact V S B A today, but it was unsuccessful. So uh, so we haven't had any discussion with them about their recommendation on it. Cause I know they do have, offer training on doing self evaluations. So I was just curious about if they ever have any justification for a closed session or if the standard is just open session.
I couldn't find, you know, I didn't call them, but I did look in the whole um, concept of when we can do closed sessions and I just didn't see what I could see. Now, maybe I missed something as to the reason to have this in closed session. Obviously superintendent's evaluation, obviously, because we're talking about one person. And if you were evaluating just the board chair, then would this would be in closed session, but this is, this is all of us. Do you have a comment on that?
Yes, certainly for my eight years that I've been on the board, all of the self evaluations were done in closed session. And my memory, which is not always great, but um, in terms of the previous um, boards that I've been part of or, or had interactions with, uh, I, I don't ever remember a board self-evaluation being public.
Maybe we started a new thing. Um, and Ms. Hulk, if I made a mistake, please forgive me. I just can't, I couldn't find a reason as I was looking through all of the reasons for a closed session.
At this point in time, I, I don't know that I have an opinion. Um, but it will be interesting to see how the board evaluation uh, is utilized and, and put into practice. And whether it is as detailed as perhaps they have been in past years. That's my only.
Okay, let's look at the last one, then we'll make some final comments and I have some comments about how this can be used. So in number 20, um, there was actually the lowest of all the protocols. When and how the board monitors and updates the school board's strategic plan. As part of the organizational meeting, the superintendent will present an annual schedule for the board to receive updates regarding the division's strategic plan. That was actually the lowest of the protocols. So in um, and it says here is the comment. It doesn't seem to me that this was done, but Dr. Boyd was also newly hired, so I'm not sure if he was tracking it or I might be just remembering it, not remembering it. So there is a concern there um, about um, you know, constant evaluations from the superintendent, but we as a board looking at that. So any thoughts about that?
I would offer, we, we did get an update. Dr. Boyd was very proactive and gave us one right at the beginning of the year with the update on where we were and so on. So.
Yeah, I thought we did too. And I think we discussed that update in a lot of detail too. So it may just been that board member didn't quite remember that, but Dr. Boyd, I personally think you did a good job with that. Um, but it is something. I mean, the strategic plan, it, it's a, it's huge. And it's something that is a lot of work every year and it's something that helps the school board realize policies we need to look at better. We need to change or update or whatever. All right. Uh, number 21 uh, was also slightly low. Parliamentary procedure, the school board will operate meeting under Roberts rules of order, except in instances where it conflicts with board policy norms and protocols. And this one was really fairly high. 3.8 is good, but there was a comment, strictly speaking, we only do Roberts uh, once a motion is made, but being somewhat flexible uh, with it, it, with it is appropriate for a five member board and it works well for us. I think it allows for better discussion. So it's actually a positive comment. Okay. I personally think that if you don't mind, board members, let's look at this that I gave you. We can email me with thoughts and then we could bring it up at the next board meeting. I do think this is something in the future. What um, let's look at some of these things, like I think it was very valuable about the comments made in the norms about the chairman. Um, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And so I just um, looking at some of these things, I think there's some areas we can continue to improve. I do think one of the highest ones that we did get pretty high approval was the way we did the superintendent's evaluation. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. You did a great job with that. And so those are the kinds of things that in board evaluations, because last year I don't think it was anywhere as near as effective as it was this year. So I appreciate um, that as a board as a whole, I think we did a much better job. Any other final comments about this? So please look at this, email me some concerns or some comments about how we might use this information. And then even some ideas about how we might change it next year. And next year, regardless of whether I'm a chairman or not, um, I will probably try to attend this V S B A um, school board self-evaluation conference. And obviously anybody else that would like to.
I think isn't, or maybe I'm mixing them. They, they do offer a, like a training session to help like flesh out a good process.
Right, right. Okay, let's move on. Um, the school administration, um, the next one was a policy that we um, took out of the last, um, last board meeting. It was a discussion policy and uh, I had mentioned that um, at least my concern. And so I have made copies um, of the policy itself. And I highlighted, I think the concern that I had at least, obviously some others may have not had this concern. Yes, I, oh, I do have one extra. I was going to give one to Dr. Boyd, but I'll give you mine afterwards. Sorry.
Do you need an extra? I just want to make sure Terry gets one.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll give it. But it's the same one that's on the uh, board docs. The difference is, is I highlighted the things that um, the reason why I said I was one of the ones that want to put it, I wanted to put it as a discussion item because I had a problem with the pronouns. So the rest of the update, I had no problem with. So I highlighted all of the areas where there were pronouns. So I'm going to leave it at that for a minute. I'll make my final comment as a board chair. But any of you, the all these, all I did was my problem was changing all the pronouns. And I'll tell you why in a moment, but any other comments about this, these two policies? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Chair, so I um, so I, I do not um, I do not concur or I don't agree with the preference for leaving the pronouns strictly as his or her. Um, I would offer that by changing the language to the student, I mean, all students are students. Using the language, the student accommodates all beliefs, preferences and religious beliefs. Sticking strictly to his or her um, makes the document intentionally discriminatory and does not accommodate all students. It only accommodates those who adhere to a rigid traditional belief system. Um, so I fail to see how the student that accommodates every single student in our school division, um, how, how that is not an approved um, use of language.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Other comments? Mr. Rolls?
Say, thank you for making those uh, highlights because in the last, we had asked to uh, leave those um, markup in there, but then accept all your changes. But all the changes are still in there. So I wasn't sure if we're going to be able to pass it today or not. But uh, but with you marking it up like that, I, I would be in favor of rejecting all changes that uh, remove gendered pronouns, but accept all the rest. Uh, because uh, I mean, it's just denying reality to uh, to change that. I mean, there was changing language. I mean, it does seem kind of silly, but um, I mean, the debate when I was in high school as well, there you know, it seemed kind of cumbersome to say his or her. I mean, the previous standards just said like his and every new it meant both things, but in any case, that's, I agree with your changes, Dr. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Hulk? Mr. Ms. Hoover?
Well, I would just say that I don't see the necessity for the change. It's not changing the intention of the policy at all. So I don't see the need to change that portion of it.
Ms. Hulk, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, um, one of the things that bothers me a little bit, I guess, is just looking at the history of, of language, whether it's, I'm, most of you know, I deal with languages. I'm in a translation organization. And most of the languages, um, they do have these, they have a neuter and then they have um, the male and the female parts of speech that um, obviously different than English language. And sometimes we separate those as a his, her, he, she, and so on. Other languages, they put the female or male as part of the actual word. And I guess I would say that um, I'm a little bit bothered that this seems a little political in my mind. Um, but also the fact that um, we haven't changed the dictionary and the pronouns are still in there. And um, I'm just feel um, like I don't necessarily want to buy into what I would see as an agenda. Um, now somebody could say, well, Mr. Bush, you have an agenda too. Yeah, that's probably true. But um, this has been in there. It's been in the English language. It's in documents all over. Uh, it's in official government documents. And I know there is a very big push to change all these pronouns all over the United States in many documents. But um, I just am not in favor of doing that at the King George County schools. I would like to keep the pronouns um, as designated his or her, he or she, just like they are and not change the language. For those reasons. Any other discussion?
Mr. Bush, I do have a comment, actually. And as Chairman Gonzalez's opinion about the pronouns, because we necessarily culturally must evolve our language and the dictionary eventually catches up with our culture. My, my concern, however, is that the ultimate point of these policies is about school admission and about admission of homeless children. And this does clearly define the term homeless student. And I think this is so important because we, I'm not sure the community realizes we had the number of homeless students that we have. It isn't simply students who are sleeping in a tent somewhere out behind someplace. There are various definitions of homeless students that are really critical for all of us to be aware of. So whereas, yes, the, the use of pronouns is very important. And I think we need to be aware of evolving culture. But we need to recognize that the term homeless student includes students who are experiencing trauma or a lack of safety related to or fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or other dangerous, traumatic, or life-threatening conditions related to the violence against a student or a family member in the student's or family's current housing situation, including the health or safety of children are jeopardized and who has no other safe residence and lacks the resources to obtain other safe permanent housing. So I think it's a very important definition that the community needs to know that we, we clearly have all of these situations at one point in time or another during most school years.
I totally agree. I have no problem with that and I totally agree. I, since I have been living here and then also many other places in the United States, I have had a lot of interaction with homelessness at various levels. A tremendous amount right now. I, I'm sure you probably could do, I can name six or seven cases I'm working with right now in terms of our church. But regardless, I totally agree with the definition, Ms. Hawk. I have no problem with that at all. My only problem were the pronouns, that's all. I, I agree with this entire policy. I have no problem with it. It's just the pronouns.
Clarifying.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if you misunderstood that. No, that whole underlined portion, I think that should be there. It clearly identifies them. That's wonderful. I totally agree with it. And it is a problem and it's a growing problem. And we did not need to not ignore it anymore. So again, I would like to see us approve this policy without changing the pronouns. That's all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I take a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the policy manual updates for J E C and J E C A with the exception of the removal of the gendered pronouns that were highlighted in the packet.
I second.
Any further discussion? All right, let's take this at one vote at a time because I know it's been a big discussion. We'll start with Ms. Gonzalez. You in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
Ms. Hawk?
Yea.
Ms. Hoover?
Yea.
Ms. Rolls?
Yeah.
Chair votes a, carries unanimously. I'll give you a copy of this, or do you already have it?
Need a copy.
Okay. Take hers, it's all the same. All right, let's move on. Since I can find. I'm sorry, too many papers. All right, now we have Dee, sorry, thank you. And I believe Mr. or Dr. Boyd, you had comments about this entire section.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, we are, as I think everyone knows at this point, we're working our policy manual from the webpage to board docs, making sure that all of our policies are on board docs, which is a pretty big job and a pretty robust effort that's been performed by Ms. Fisher and also Ms. Bushrod at the school board office. So what we have before you this evening in your board document in landscape form is kind of some housekeeping items. What we need to do is strike some policies or some regulations that can now be found in other policies and/or regulations. What you'll see in that table there on the left-hand side is the policy ID and policy title. You can also see any additional information. But for the most part, what you'll see across the board is, like I said, some housekeeping measures. You'll see on the right-hand side, the, the initial request, which is for most of these is to strike them. And then it'll tell you which policy and/or regulation that, that information is referenced in now as we have updated the policy over time. So I would just ask this evening for, for any questions that are pertaining to this, but also an approval if possible.
All right, comments from the board, this slide here.
I certainly am in favor of supporting the changes that Ms. Fisher and Dr. Boyd have identified. That, that policy manual in written form, folks, is this thick and sits on a pedestal in Ms. Bushrod's office. And one, one sneaks in to take a look at it very carefully. Teasing, of course. But I, I think the more we can clarify this and reduce the language, and there are so many overlapping policies that I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Rolls?
I want to tell the ad hoc committee, great job in the summary. Thank you for putting that all together. I'm sure it took a lot, it was a lot of work. But Dr. Boyd, you mentioned that migrating policies to the board docs. So is the intent then for it to be, have a full copy in board docs as well as on the webpage? Or what's the final end state?
The intent is to, when you pull up board docs moving forward, what you'll be able to do is see all of our policies after we get this housekeeping work done. Ms. Bushrod and Ms. Fisher have done an amazing job of highlighting these areas that we need to address. We're in conversations with board docs right now. So what we want to be able to do is hand them over a copy that they can easily upload into board lock, into board docs. So when you pull up your board docs moving forward after we do this migration, then you'll be able to search by policy name. You'll be able to search by policy letter. You'll be able to search by keyword or term. And that'll give you any information you want. And, and not just as, as board members, but anybody in the community that's looking for information that's relevant to any policy that we have, which I think will be very beneficial.
Okay, so then it would no longer be on websites as now. It'd be solely board docs is how you'd access?
Yes, what we'll do is we'll create a link on our webpage to our actual board doc that shows the policy. It'll be much better that way. It'll, it'll take out the redundancy between the two different areas. And also, anyone that's looking for policies right now, we all know that you have to know what specific policy section you're, you want to look into, like student or section J or whatever it may be, and then start to work your way through and find that particular policy. All policies being in board docs will allow you, like I said, to even use something as simple as key, as key term or word to give you information on that topic.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, your recommendation is you would actually like to have a motion for this so we can follow through with these updates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or do I have a motion? Either one. Or do we want to hold this off and make it an action item for the next time? One of the three.
I will, I will make a motion
All right.
that we approve the ad hoc policy committee recommendations, and I will list them.
Okay.
J H C D, J H C D A, J H C D C, J J A D, J L A, J L dash R, J M A, J O dash F, J O dash F appendix A, J O dash F appendix, attachment B, and J O dash R.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. All right, let's move on to committee reports. Let's start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay, there was a technology advisory committee on October 26th. Unfortunately, at the last minute, I was unable to attend. But I do have the minutes and I forwarded them to the rest of the board earlier this evening. So it looks like there were a lot of good topics that were discussed. One that I would just, I can touch on, there was an interactive panel update. So there have been some discussions previously, looking at like the big interactive panel displays in classrooms and which teachers were interested in, you know, using them in the classroom versus not. I know they have been rolled out to some of the teachers. They've been very well received. I know, in fact, my son is in a classroom with a teacher who was super excited about using one. And I've heard all about it. And the kids are super engaged and, you know, and enthusiastic about it. So I think there's, you know, a success story, right? Where like technology is inserted in a classroom in an opportunity that's enhancing the learning experience. So I think that's pretty cool. So anyway, there are a lot of other, there are a lot of other updates. So I do apologize, I was unable to attend and add my own notes to it. But I did forward that for everyone's review and consideration. So that's all I have.
Hawk?
Yes, I attended the Health and Safety Advisory Committee meeting. But we had that incredible report tonight that I could not begin to add anything to because they all did such an incredibly wonderful job because they are all so good at what they do, by the way. So I think they've done my report. The Chesapeake Bay Governor's School Advisory Meeting will be this Thursday night, so I'll report next meeting.
Ms. Hoover?
I have none.
All right, well, I sort of a report, obviously, now that we're part of the A T I, the lab school, we have regular emails, at least I do, and Dr. Boyd and myself. I think the rest of you get those too, from Dr. Towery. And there's a meeting coming up. And the important thing is, is they will begin the lottery this month for the eighth grade. And I think most of you read that in the email. And that was in the last email and there were several other things. We haven't had a meeting since we met with Dr. Towery here, but as soon as we do, I believe we're having one this, is it this Wednesday, Dr. Boyd, or next Wednesday? It can't be next Wednesday.
No, I think we are, the next one is November 29th.
Okay, I was right. Okay. So I'll report at the next board meeting. All right, now we have the superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I've had the opportunity tonight to talk a little bit about some of the things I was going to bring up this evening. We did, Mrs. Higgins and I had our first community conversation earlier this evening at Smoot Library. We had a few in attendance. Wasn't bad, but it is that time of year where we are, we are in need of a lot of feedback. We, we want a lot of information from our community, from all of our stakeholders. And what I mean by that is we had our vast superintendent's meeting last week. There's already conversations about the governor's budget and what that's going to look like. So those conversations and, and that information pertaining to the state budget is, is becoming topic of conversation across the state. So we will need to begin to solicit more and more feedback from our community as how, as, you know, how we want to look at our budget moving forward. Also, we have been in conversations at the school board office as it pertains to our strategic plan. We've taken a look at not only where we began with the plan, but our, our performance objectives as we've moved through the process. If you remember, this is a five-year, very organic document that changes as we change. So we've taken a look at those. We've shared those with each other. And now the next step is really to finalize the direction we want to go in and share some of those things with our community and solicit some feedback from our community. So here we are in the season where we, we're in need of feedback from our stakeholders as it pertains to our strategic plan and really budget initiatives moving forward. So we'll have another community meeting just before our next school board meeting and probably provide some other opportunities where we can begin to solicit some feedback from the community. So very much looking forward to that. As I talked to you earlier, I mentioned the all-in plan from the governor that has now been approved. So we have a very robust plan as it pertains to tutoring. We've got some during school tutoring, some after school tutoring. We've addressed some of our transportation concerns as it pertains to that. We're exploring different opportunities for those that can tutor and those that are willing to tutor. We've provided some additional resources with these funds to our literacy initiatives, which, like I've said before, are really advanced from what I hear from other school divisions. We're doing a great job with our literacy initiative in King George County. And then finally, we've got some money in that plan from the governor for attendance initiatives. I'm very happy to hear V S B is initiative when it comes to judicial support for, for attendance initiatives. But we're focusing on some mentoring ideas when it comes to attendance initiatives as well. So with all that said, there's a lot of good things going on and we're making moves in the right direction. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Hoover?
I just want to thank the middle school leadership group for doing the pledge. I kind of enjoyed their, their, their little chatter. Also, wanted to thank Ms. Strauss for her commitment to DECA. I know that it's a, it's a huge benefit to all the students involved. So thank you, Ms. Strauss, for that. Thank you also, Ms. Hawk, for the donations of the instruments. I can see the excitement in the music teacher's eyes for that. And thank you to the Health Advisory Committee for that great presentation. Very informative and I think I can actually use that to, when I get asked questions by parents. So I appreciate that. And I just see a lot of good stuff. So thanks, everyone, for all your commitment to the schools.
Mr. Rolls?
I'll say, I appreciate having DECA come to offer public comment. It's amazing that Mrs. Dee Strauss has been doing that for 23 years. What a great shot she's done, really growing that program. And I can see an enthusiasm for students to just come in and speak to us, which is always, it's a treat. And also, I'll see the King George Education Foundation is a huge blessing to us coming and giving all those grants to help give us the extra educational opportunities for our students. So really appreciate them. And also mentioned, I didn't really have a committee report per se, but I did get a chance since last board meeting to give out my, the C T eats cards to some other folks to make it to the event November 14th. So thank you, Mrs. Ranko, for heading that up. And so, yeah, we had a location change to Donal Adios, just because we need extra space. That's a great problem to have. Get a lot of involvement there, which is really encouraging. And helped me to have some great conversations with folks as I handed those out too. And I brought up several times, I'll keep mentioning it so it doesn't get lost, about the opportunity for us to try to plan to get together as, you know, county boards, the board advisors, the school board to do a joint, like strategic planning session, February 5th is a tentative date. And I also get an election tomorrow. I mean, because there, there's part of concern about wanting to vote now and commit a future board, but as of tomorrow, we'll know exactly who will be on those boards. Of course, we've known who's going to be on the school board for some time because they're running unopposed. And they're all on board. So it just looks like we have a few final details to figure out as far as location and the moderator perhaps. And so look forward to trying to make some progress on that and possibly be ready to even vote next time if we find out that we're favoring a location, particularly a, a location away that's going to require a reservation in advance. We don't want to get to February and not have the plans laid to do, have a successful meeting. I think that could be, I don't know if that's ever, it's probably been done before. But if it has, it's been a long time. So I think it'd be a really, really good thing for us to pull together now. So also, this is our last meeting until Thanksgiving. Last year, I read you all three sentences of George Washington's original Thanksgiving proclamation. The unfortunate thing is that three sentences back in the 18th century were pretty long. So I won't do it again. I'm, I'll give you a short version this, this time. I'll just read the first sentence from that before I wish you happy Thanksgiving and then finish with a summary. So he, he read, "Whereas is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor." Adds a few more whereas's, but in summary, he says, "Have a happy Thanksgiving and I hope you all enjoy your families and have a good time off and we'll see you in December."
All right, thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to skip over to the student rep. So I haven't ignored you. It's just that I thought I'd go this way and then go to you and we'll come towards me. So what's going on at high school?
Hello. So I have my report here from the high school. I listed it in four different categories, education, school, achievements, events, and finally, five, sorry. Education, school, achievements, events, representatives, and other. So starting with education and school, in our advisory classes, these past few weeks, since our school, since our last school board meeting, we've been initiating new, new, some new activities in these classes. With last week, Monday, October 30th, all students received friendship bracelet, sorry, bracelets for the Project Kine program.
bracelets for the Project Kind program that I believe the Health Committee announced earlier, yes. All students received that, and they were explained about what, what this friendship bracelet meant and what the Project Kind program was. Moving on, an individual class, Ms. Anderson's honors government class, will be traveling to the Capitol Building Wednesday, November 8th, and they'll be exploring the Capitol Building, walk around Washington DC. And they'll be, and they'll get the opportunity to meet up with the Virginia Senator, Tim Kane, and potentially meet up with two other Congress members as well. Abigail Spamber is still in the air. Moving on to achievements, in late October, one of the students from the FFA, named Justin, I couldn't figure out his last name, unfortunately, but he placed first at the George Washington FFA Tractor Driving Contest that was held at the Sponsetown High School, is one great and proud achievement for our KJHS FFA. And then XC placed, last week, I believe, XC placed sixth at the 4B Regional Championship. And now free runners from our XC, from our XC at the high school are now going to go off to states to potentially win the championship there. These people are freshmen, Timothy Wingert, which is actually a huge thing for XC because is a freshman going off to states, which you actually rarely see for XC. And then, so congrats to them. Moving on from there, there's also senior Xander Aguilar, which he has been, he's been doing XC for a very long time, and he's very proud of what he does for his team at the high school, and he keeps on working hard for his team. And then sophomore, Calista Rash, female runner in XC, that would also be heading off to state championships. And then October 27th, I believe, sorry, no, October... I am so sorry, forgot to take... Sometime during the second to last week of October, the King George Royal Regiment Marching Band received a superior rating at the Massaponix High School Babota Competition for the last few weeks, few months, starting in July. The marching band's been working extremely hard trying to get this superior rating, and now they continue their superior streak with 11 years in their background. Moving on, the NJRTC Drill Team, last week, October 29th, went to Osburn Park and brought back eight, a total of eight trophies from that event, one of them being a third-place trophy for, for the drill team. Definitely a huge achievement for the ROTC program over at the high school. And congrats to all, all cadets and Major Callahan, Major Mass Sergeant Helker, that puts effort and support into the students to achieve this great goal. From there, last thing for achievements, Foxes, the Foxes football team won 48 to 14 at the Chancellor High School home game last Friday, November 3rd. This is a big deal for the football team, as currently they are undefeated in the region, and now they'll be heading off to state playoffs to potentially win in states, and hopefully from there, go beyond. And speaking of the football team and events, this Friday, November 10th, will be the first playoff game that the football team will be conducting. They'll be going up against Hanover County High School. And hopefully there, they'll continue their, they'll continue their undefeated score and go off to compete with other Virginia schools that are broader from our region. Also, this Friday, there will be a Veterans Day 5K and One Mile Run fundraiser sponsored by DECA and Cross Country. All funds from this event will be going to Some Give All Foundation. The event starts in some, 8:30 in the morning, and will go on until 9:30 until up to awards. And then, from there between, or, sorry, moving on. Between October 18th through the 21st, Feeder and Drama Club opened their fall production of Arsenic and Old Lace, which introduced a bunch of great drama and comedic time in their production. And shout out to Ms. Wines and Mr. Mack, and all student actors and actresses, and people who worked in the background to make this production happen. Congrats to you all for the hard work on that. And lastly, for events, I, the DECA Club will be heading off to districts this upcoming Wednesday, as Ms. Strauss mentioned earlier, November 8th, at the Sponsetown Mall Town Center. And as she said, almost, I believe she said almost 300 members are going to that, which is pretty big for, for DECA. Now moving on to representatives, on Thursday, November 2nd, me and Tony Brown attended our first representative meeting during pass at the high school. Unfortunately, Chad Brown was unable to attend due to a personal matter. At the meeting, me and Tony came up with a few ideas. I discussed the potential of launching a Google form to all high school students to, to submit responses to us representatives, so we can, so we can either express it to this next upcoming school board meetings, or bring it up to individual school board members to discuss about students and their public opinion on certain policies and matters going on at the, on the local government. And then also, with the Google form, they'll be able to submit achievements of certain clubs, sports, or the school that made, that we are unaware of, so we can announce it at the following upcoming school board meetings as well. And lastly, moving on to other, I, the NJRTC program sponsored seven families through Love Thy Neighbor, LTN. LTN's a food pantry here in the county that provides meals and more accessories to people in need. The NJRTC program through LTN donated $490 to these seven families for them this Thanksgiving. Following that, this week, there will be no school on November 7th due to Election Day, and also November 10th due to Veterans Day. And for a comment I have about November 7th, Election Day, I encourage all students who are eligible to vote at the high school to go out and vote and experience voting registration and going out and voting for who you wish to see in government office. It's definitely, definitely something that all people should know and do. And lastly, for the next school board meeting in December, the next representative that will be here is high school student representative, Tony Brown. He will be here on, I believe, December, what would that be?
Six.
Six.
Sixth, yeah.
And then following that would be Chad Brown. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gonzalez?
All right, thanks, Connor. Fall out of my chair. I want to start with just a repeated thank you to Ms. Hock for donating the ukuleles. I know you are always looking for creative ways to add to our strings offerings, so in the schools. I think music has the, the ability to be, make significant impacts on students' lives. I know it's a big part of mine. It opens up a lot of doors, a lot of experiences, so thank you for helping make that possible. I did want to make a definite statement in my support of the committee reports that we've been getting out. You all did an excellent job today providing some insight into the Health and Safety Committee. I know we get, you know, our, our board reports, and not knocking my or any of my colleagues' ability to report out on the gongs ons of the committees, but hearing it from all of you in more detail, I think, is really valuable. I wish we could have been doing this for the last couple of years, but I think it's great that we've done that this year, and we're starting to get more information, so thank you, thank you. And along those lines, I really liked the, the update on Project Kind. I love your shirts, I would love to have one of those. And I just think it's very fitting, just some of the challenges we see across society right now. I took notes on some of the quotes you had on some of those slides, right? But believe there is good in the world and make kindness, kindness the norm. I think those are such strong statements. They're hard to do a lot of times, especially in the world of social media and everything else. I just, those really ring true with me. So thank you for putting them at the forefront and making them a big part of our students' lives. Because I think, I think kindness goes a long ways, and that's, I don't, I don't mean that in a cliched fashion, right? It does make a very big difference in our ability to impact others' lives, so thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Hock?
Okay. Well, the, these are hard acts to follow, folks. I, I do thank you for your comments about the instruments, and, and I'll give another shout out to Little Rev, go, go look up on Google. It's fun, it brings some joy to your life. And I guess my only comment to, to us and to the public is, look in your closets, find what's, what's in there. Go to your grandmothers and your grandfathers and find out what's in their closets, aside from the bones and the skeletons. But look for instruments wherever you can find them. And you, please consider, you know, if you can purchase something on Facebook, check with your, with your school or Dr. Boyd first, and make sure that it's an appropriate thing, but check it out and bring it in and donate it. Perhaps learn to play it in the meantime, that's also a good idea. Prevent senility, I'm hoping. Tomorrow is Election Day. It is so essential that, yes, indeed, especially for first-time voters, it is so important to make that, to cast that first ballot, and so exciting to be part of the process, good or bad outcome, whatever, you're part of the process. And speaking of part of the process, consider running for office. We should never, no matter how good our folks are, no matter how solid, they should never be unopposed. We always need choices. Secondly, or thirdly, I guess, just a, a great wow and thank you to Ms. Fisher and Casey Morrison and Dr. Wright for the work you do all year. And this report shows, hopefully, the community, the vast array of issues that the schools have concerns about, and they were trying to do something about. And again, especially all three of you, but, but Mrs. Fisher, I know the number of items on, on your plate every day, and I, you just are living up to and beyond expectations. So please know how grateful we are for you and hope you continue in your good work, all three of you. I, I have another concern that sort of blends in with, with the governor's program and the, the focus on attendance, but there is a... The dark side of truancy is that many times, well, truancy will end in a dropout. And looking at the data that's just come out, which is on the DOE, the Virginia DOE site, our dropout rate and numbers has become very, very concerning, both across the state and for us. And of course, this, this report gives information for the year behind us, the 21, 22, but for us, for King George, our dropout numbers were 48 students. In, out of grades seven through 12, we lost 48 students out of 2,174 students, which is a 2.21 percentage dropout rate. For example, compared to Fredericksburg City, which has a higher number, 64 students, and Caroline County, which has a lower number of 20 students. We have to be concerned about every one of these students, because every one of these 48 students did not... We somehow in our system let them down, and they let themselves down, and they are going to need support for the rest of their lives because of this process here. It is so important for attendance to occur on a regular basis, to deal with our chronic attendance and to deal with the fallout from that. And as a comparison, from 1920, for King George, our number was only 13, so, out of 2,092 students. So, and, and yes, we had COVID, and it was trauma across the country, but we need to focus here on our attendance and our families and our community here in King George, and make sure kids are in school and supported. Our mental health in schools is another huge issue, and again, the committee spoke to it so eloquently in, in so many ways. That committee report is the essence of student and staff mental health in our school system. I do want to note that I subscribe, and I suggest that all of the board members and prospective board members look at subscribing to Education Week. It is published, and it can be found online at edweek.org. And some folks might just find a gift of Edweek as a new board member, but in, this is an extent, an extremely important issue. So if you can go back and get this, and Dr. Boyd, maybe we can copy this for our folks, it talks about all the pieces of mental health crisis, the staff, the students, the potential suicide rate, the, even down to teachers' stress and what schools are doing about it. So it's, it's a fascinating issue that I encourage folks to read. A sec, let's see, and, oh, I did want to speak to, I was delighted in the school safety audit process that we're going to consistent language. This, this is a huge issue, and I'll give you an example from the past, in that we used to have a code that some folks might remember at, at the high school and the school board office, that it was a code Mary Beth, and it signified that there was an undesired person in the building or the unit. Nobody else knew what that meant, but a small faction, it certainly wasn't terribly effective. We had to use it a couple of times at the school board office, but only because a couple of people knew what it meant. So it, it makes such a difference to have that consistency of emergency language, and especially relating to our fire and rescue and Sheriff's Department. When we're speaking the same language, we can get things done so much faster. And last, but, but hopefully, perhaps, a bit of humor, I know that after the election process, so many folks are just exhausted. And at this time of year, so many folks can get just exhausted. And, and I have, I'm on this website that has Scottish words of, of the week, and they're wonderful Celtic words that are sometimes off the streets of Scotland, Ireland, and various places. But the word of the week is dumbfungled. And dumbfungled means... And dumbfungled means to be mentally and physically worn out after an election, or after a huge Thanksgiving dinner, or whatever you've just been through. You might be dumbfungled, so you need to take care of yourself and take a break. End.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. I'll try to be brief, I know we're running quite late. First of all, thank you very much, Ms. Hawk, for the donation of the ukuleles, that was fantastic, and I appreciate that so much. And the King George Education Fund, and all of the grants, and donations, and things that they gave to many different departments totaling, I remember, was over $4,000, those were wonderful. Thank you to the middle school people, and I actually have their names here, for Alex, Aaron, Peyton, Kayla, and Georgia. And appreciate that. And the Health and Safety, I agree, all the board members mentioned it, but thank you. My goodness, that was a wonderful report. I know it was long, you're probably thinking right now, we're part of the reason that we're running so long, but it's fine. If we're gonna run long, I'd rather be about things like that than stuff that we may have to, whatever it is going back and forth, which is valuable, don't get me wrong, but it is very good to hear wonderful reports and all the work that you did to, to present that. And Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Gonzalez, you're right, we could, we can't even come close to that, and if we did, we'd be here till midnight every time, so, but we appreciate that very much. I did want to recommend, or mention, that I had, it's kind of interesting, several months ago, and this is mostly for the board, and also to put on the next agenda item, I got a, an email from Patricia Bear, she's the Assistant Director of the Government Affairs, Home Educators Association of Virginia. And it's funny, she said they have 1,400 members that look at all of the board updates, and any of the proposals that we make, and anyway, she looked at what we did in terms of the religious exemption, we made a small policy change, she thought it was a good change, but she said it should not be in policy, it should be on our website. So I'm going to respect that, and we're gonna make some small changes, if you would, I'll get you, it's on, it's the religious exemption policy, if you'd put that on for discussion at the next board meeting, I'd appreciate it. And again, it was, it had to do with giving two weeks' notice, or, or four weeks' notice, sorry, before the first day of school, if you remember that. She said that really, that's a good recommendation, but it shouldn't be in policy because it conflicted with something in the state of Virginia. Anyway, small thing, but important to them, and important to, I want to respect her, it was kind of funny here, I thought we were doing a positive thing, and she said, oh yeah, it was, but put it on your website. So it's kind of interesting. All right, yes.
And you're asking for it to go on.
Yeah, I wanted to go on the next agenda discussion item. And it's, it's the religious exemption policy, the RE one, wherever that is, I don't have it handy right now. Just put that on the next, I got an email and a phone call from her, she was very good, very kind. All right, I believe that's all I have. I did want to say something, my, my son is in very dire health situations, and there's a possibility, and I appreciate that Ms. Hawk even mentioned at the last minute, and I hope we don't have to do that, that she would represent me if, in terms of the proposals, the legislative proposals, but I don't think that will happen, but thank you for offering that, Ms. Hawk, I appreciate it very much. I'd say it's unlikely that I'll miss the next meeting, but if I do, Mr. Rolls will be as the assistant, he'll, as the assistant chair, he'll take over. So that's all, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board convene in a closed meeting to review hires, resignations, retirements, terminations, stipends, and substitutes as permitted under 2.2-3711A, Number 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now- Into open session? There's a special, please, board member, he gave out, yeah, there you go.
Now, this is a closed session, entering the closed-
Sorry.
I move that the King George-
Ooh.
I would sit on the end of my chair, and I'm 100%.
Please stop that.
Good, good.
Just making sure you're all on.
All right, do we have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session, certify that pursuant to the State Code Section 2.2-3712D, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and all such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
I second certify.
Verify.
Anybody else certify? Did you certify already? Okay, good. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in open session. All right, action resulting from the closed meeting, do we have a motion to approve the personnel that's presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.